Good evening and welcome to the Board of Commissioners extraordinary session. It is July 15, 2024 at 6:00 PM. This time I'd like to request everybody please silence your cell phones and all other electronic devices. I'd like to ask Commissioner Gwen Flowers-Taylor to deliver the invocation and Commissioner Rita Johnson to lead us in the pledge of the flag.
If you would join me, please. Father and Huh, we come to you this evening in thanksgiving and in gratitude for all that you have given us, for the gift of living in a free land where we're able to have meetings of this sort and be able to share our opinions and not feel that we're going to be penalized or hurt as a result of that. We thank you for the sunshine, we thank you for the rain, we thank you just for waking us up today, Lord, and we also ask you to put a hedge of protection around our first responders, sheriffs, paramedics, firemen, everyone that's on the front line taking care of this community. We ask you to be in this room tonight to make sure that we listen with our hearts, not just our ears, and we understand what our citizens and our fellow commissioners are saying and that we allow our minds to be open enough to do the best thing for this community. These things we ask, Father, in the name of your Son Jesus, amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to our flag. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to move number eight under new business to executive session.
I have a motion to move item number eight to the executive session. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
That really should have been there the whole time. This isn't something that...
All right, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero. Item number four, presentation of financial statement. The presentation of the financial statement for the month ending June 30, 2024. Welcome, Ms. Dyke.
Good evening. In the following presentation, I will present a summary of the county's financial activity for fiscal year 2024 as of June 30th, encompassing revenue collections, expenditures and encumbrances for the current general fund and fire fund budget. As of June 30th, 12 months have passed in the present fiscal year, which accounts for 100% of the budget. If you notice on the slide, the general fund revenues are at 72.7 million, which is 108% of the budget. General fund expenditures and encumbrances total 61.5 million, which account for 93% of the budget. Fire district revenues are 10.1 million, which accounts for 107% of their budget. Fire district expenditures are at 8.3 million, which is 67.9%, and the encumbrances are at 4.8, which is 36.1%.
What are the encumbrances?
Their supplies for the fire trucks, the new fire trucks that we have not yet purchased.
The general funds or the impact fee? I mean, aren't their funds coming from the impact fee?
Not for the fire trucks, no ma'am, that's coming from the fire district fund, not the general fund, the fire fund. As of June 30th, our revenues have increased by 3% compared to the previous month, while expenditures have slightly increased by 9%. The summary of revenue sources, the county has collected 53.2 million in taxes, which accounted for 73.2% of the total revenue received. These taxes include real property tax, current and previous year, interest and penalty on real and personal property, public utility tax, motor vehicle, avalorum, tag and title fees for personal property, also includes local option sales tax, business occupation tax, and hotel motel tax. Intergovernmental revenues total 10.1 million, comprising 14% of total reported revenue. These revenues are from local, state, and federal sources, including real estate transfer tax, Georgia Highway Safety Grants, VOCA, Accountability Court, and DOT grants, FEMA and Boost, and CSBG reimbursements, United Way, and other grants. The county has collected 4.5 million, or 6.1% in charges for services for June, including fees from probate court, adult probation and supervision fees, inmate housing, medical clothing reimbursements for both the CI and Sheriff's Department, recreation and recording fees. For miscellaneous revenue for June, 2 million was collected, or 2.8%, which includes income from resource officer reimbursements, CI and Sheriff's Department inmate phone commissions, inmate store commissions, CI detail reimbursement, and spay and neuter fees. For fines and forfeitures, Spalding County generated 1.8 million, or 2% of the total revenue for court fines. License and permits account for 655,000, contributions and donations account for 168,000, and investment income account for 95,300 in revenues. Next slide, please. The summary of expenditures and encumbrances for employee salaries, benefits, and FICA taxes, that accounts for 55.2% or 33.9 million of total expenditures. Expenditures on purchases and contractual services such as radio and computer equipment, software, office equipment, maintenance, travel dues and subscriptions, education, training, and election expense, also telephone, postage, and auto and truck maintenance, amounts to 28.8% or 17.7 million. Supplies, which include departmental supplies, utilities, uniforms, fuel, and small equipment, account for 9% or 5.6 million. Debt service, which includes our enterprise vehicles principal and interest, airport authority bond principal and interest, Naresco capital lease principal and interest, and other capital leases, such as interest payments on equipment like our compact track loader, account for 2% or 1.2 million for total expenditures. Capital outlay accounts for 1.5%, and other costs account for 3.3% or $2 million. These costs include various park repairs and supplies, T-Sploss paving and sidewalks, our Cigna flexible spending account, streetlights, the Griffin Spot and Development Authority, and the library. Next slide, please. And the last slide shows the total balance of all of our checking and investment accounts in Spalding County as of June 28th, that is the day that the bank statements came out. So as of June 28th, we have 64.8 million, which has shown a growth of 11.4 million since the start of FY '24. This concludes my presentation, and I'll be happy to try and answer any of your questions.
Do I have any, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second? Second. I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion, questions? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero. Thank you, Ms. Dyke. Item number two, FY '23 audit update.
I spoke with the partner of Mauden and Jenkins around 5:30, and they are waiting on the final clearance from the head of the governmental practice to complete the audit for the county. We should have the audit complete by close of business tomorrow afternoon.
Very good.
All right, and then we immediately...
We immediately upload it to DCA.
Yes, I will immediately upload it to all the institutions.
Okay. Been a long hard, yes, thank you. All right, item number three, forensic audit update. Ms. Dyke?
The forensic audit is proceeding as planned, with auditors scheduled to commence onsite inspection and scanning of documents tomorrow morning.
How long do we expect that to last?
How long do we expect that to last?
Six.
They should be complete by the end of October, is what the contract says for them. Very pleased with how it's progressing. The data has been uploaded to their system, and they're coming tomorrow to do scanning of the documents that we don't have electronic formats for, so they're doing the work for us, and they are reviewing everything.
Who's doing that?
They are a firm that has an Atlanta office downtown Atlanta.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Ms. Dyke, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Item number five, presentations proclamation. Consider approval of a proclamation declaring July as the National Park and Recs Month?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero. Ms. Flowers-Taylor?
Spalding County proclamation...
Just a minute, can you move your mic for us?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Get my mic. Thank you.
Designation, proclamation designation of July as Park and Recreation Month, whereas Parks and Recreation is an integral part of communities throughout this country, including Spalding County, and whereas Parks and Recreation promotes health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people who live near parks, and whereas Parks and Recreation promotes time spent in nature, which positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being, and alleviating illnesses such as depression, attention deficit disorders, and Alzheimer's, and whereas Parks and Recreation encourages physical activities by providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles, and whereas Parks and Recreation is a leading provider of healthy meals, nutrition services, and education, and whereas Park and Recreation programming and education services, such as the out-of-school time programming, youth sports, and environmental education are critical to childhood development, and whereas Parks and Recreation increases a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction, and whereas Parks and Recreation is fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community, and whereas Parks and Recreation is essential and adaptable infrastructure that makes our communities resilient in the face of natural disasters and climate change, and whereas our Parks and Natural Recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors, and whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and whereas Spalding County recognizes the benefits derived from Parks and Recreation resources, now therefore be it resolved by the Spalding County Board of Commissioners that July is recognized as Park and Recreation Month in Spalding County, as witnessed by Clay Davis, Chairman, and Steve Ledbetter, Ph.D., County Clerk.
Good afternoon, Commissioner, Chair.
Afternoon, Robert.
My name is Robbie Milner, Program Manager for Parks and Recreation, and these are the numbers that we came up with as the update for the whole county Aquatic Center that I know the community is very proud of, and they're excited about the time that they're able to spend in this new aquatic center exercising against some leisure services. So the numbers that we have right now, I shared it with Reagan earlier today, and right now we're averaging about 121 swimmers a day. At this point, as of today, we have 1,943 people that have entered the pool to swim. The biggest number that I wanted to share that we have right now is about 471 swimmers have been old school age kids from the ages of middle school, high school, and elementary school, and now that we're adding public school, that's also be private school and home school, and that number is increasing daily, and they're getting the opportunity to enjoy the pool. And so those are some of the numbers as you look in. The weekends are very, the weekend count...
Is that seven days a week?
It's seven days a week that we open, and weekend is on...
So that has been expanded to private school and homeschoolers as well?
Homeschoolers as well, private and homeschoolers, right. We've added that. And so the weekend count has been pretty busy. You can see it's been consistent. The first weekend, we had 193 swimmers. On the second weekend that we were open, 231, and this past weekend, we had 246.
Okay. I can't remember, what time does it close on the weekend?
On weekends, it's from 12 to 6. Saturday and Sunday, the pool opens at 12 and closes at 6.
6, okay.
What about the program? Can I ask you a question? What, what, how are we on the programming?
So, I met with Laura, the pool manager, today. It's still a work in progress, they're working on the programming, because we want the pool to be programmatic during those hours. I think we're looking more at August, talking to him today that some of those programs like water aerobics, swimming lessons, and things of that nature would start programming the pool. Right now, the morning hours, we're just trying to get people familiar with the pool and getting people to use the pool.
Okay. And I'm glad that you got it straightened out, because there was obviously a misunderstanding about school age kids.
Yeah, I shared that with him today, and so he perfectly understands that, and that's how they address everybody that comes into public, private, public, and the home schools will be able to, as long as they can show they're county residents of Spalding County, a resident of Spalding County.
Great.
Any questions on this? This is the first report we've had, so we expect...
When does school start? When does school start?
School, August is, I'm not, it's first, first, August the 7th.
I'm just curious if that's on the table.
Not sure. I don't have any kids at school, so I don't really...
It's right. What was I saying?
August the 5th.
August 5th, okay.
Okay, anything else?
I don't know.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number three, beat the heat. Chief Polk?
Hey, good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to share with you guys. This is going to be our third annual Beat the Heat program, that we try to combine it with a back-to-school type program along with the safety presentations. I think this is going to be our biggest and best presentation yet. We had a planning meeting last week, and we have several partners that are going to come in and bring their different components of safety and equipment showing, and we partnered with Public Works on their equipment, and we're going to have water games and food, and most of all, just have some safety presentations and show kids how to be prepared as the school year starts. And while we're doing that, we're going to, you know, offer the Beat the Heat things. We're still working on getting our annual fan donation funds. It's been a little chore this year, they changed the process with our local vendor, and so we're steady working on that with Erica to get all the forms in place so we can get those, and hopefully we'll have, we're trying to have the fans to be able to donate that same day, but that's yet to be determined.
Give us again the date and location.
It's going to be at Headquarters Fire Station, 600 Carver Road, and it's going to be on Saturday, July the 27th, from noon till 2 o'clock.
Okay, I'll be there.
All right, any questions?
Can you donate fans at that time, or do you want to have them beforehand?
I'm trying to have them ready to distribute that day, I am. But I'm optimistic, but it's been a chore.
But you take business donations and things like that, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
I do have a question, and, you know, this is just me talking up here. So I noticed that over the Fourth of July holiday, when they did the Peachtree Road Race, that there was some apparatus that looked like a stick that was hooked into the fire hydrant, and it was a sprinkler.
Okay.
You know, I don't know how much that cost, but it has been extremely hot, is extremely hot, and I almost feel like we need to look at, because I don't know the cost, but certainly we need to do more, because this, the heat has just been horrendous. You know, you can't even come out of the house. And also, you know, if you live in East Griffin, where I live, it's a long way to get to Carver Road if you walk in. So I would love, I would love to know the cost, it costs for us to do that, and maybe we can kind of, you know, do it at, do it somewhere near Woodruff one time and do it, you know, because, you know, if you live up in North Spalding County and you're a kid, how you going to get down to the Carver Roads Fire Station? And I mean, I don't know how much money it costs, but, you know, I'm not even saying just kid, grown folks love to get sprinkled too. And I would love it if we did a much better job, and I saw it in the Griffin Daily News, we know it comes out every other day, for us to let people know that there are places for them to go and sit in the fire stations or the rec centers during the course of the day so that they can get away from the heat. I don't think a lot of people know that.
Right, and we have tried to be very aggressive from the start of the summer, setting up cooling stations, with the library as well, has been very gracious to offer us their location as well, and we have four of the recreation centers that people can go to during the day.
But what do we have on the north side? Where can they go on the north side? I mean, when I say north side, I mean like to the west of Georgia Highway 3, in the west of 1941. There's, there's just nothing up there, or even, there's probably per capita more swimming pools on the south side in this town than it is up there, but I think it's a good thing that we do it, but we have to also remember that kids are not just in the inner city, they are around the county. And even if it's just one day, you know, that's one day that they can look forward to going, doing some, some kind of activity. I, like I said, I don't know what it costs, I don't expect as soon as school starts, it's going to stop being hot. So this doesn't necessarily have to be something that we're doing just because school is out, but we have a community that's pretty much on fire and unable to come out of the house because of the heat, so just some thoughts, random thoughts to something that we might could do, that we can engage more people.
We can figure out and look at it. Good idea, all right. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Glenn.
Thank you so much.
Item number four, presentation to Kevin King for the earning the Public Works certification. Director Amberger?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Good to be here this evening, and it's exciting to be here this evening. Before we recognize Mr. King, I'd like to tell you a little bit about him. He began his public works career with the City of Griffin, where he worked nine years. He started in Spalding County in 2013. He came to us as a detail officer in the grass crew. He was promoted to Senior Officer of Utility Crew. He was then a Senior Officer of our Bridge Crew in charge of our 83 bridges. In 2022, he was promoted to Supervisor of Public Works Construction. He's a graduate of the Leadership Griffin Spalding. He holds a GRPA Maintenance Management Certificate, certification, and he is a coach of a World Series Championship baseball team with his picture in the hallway.
All right.
All right.
He has his family here this evening, his son Kevin Jr. and Kayla. His mom and dad are here, and I'm going to let Kevin introduce them in a little bit. We're here this evening because last week at the 10th Annual Georgia APWA Conference, Kevin King was honored and with the APWA National Certificate of Public Works Management. This is through the American Public Works Association, the APWA Georgia Chapter, and Carl Vinson Institute of UGA. He's completed 90 hours of classroom training. He's completed three hours, took three, three years to complete the training. He is one of only 400 public works employees in the state of Georgia that has the certification. He is also the very first one in Spalding County. So it's an honor this evening that we, that we honor Mr. Kevin King with his APWA National Certificate of Public Works Management. I'd like him to come up and introduce his family before we take the pictures.
First, I want to thank the board, Dr. Ledbetter, and TJ for allowing me the opportunity to attend this class, to obtain this certification. I have with me tonight, my family, I have my dad, Robert, my mom, Shirley, my son, Kevin Jr., and my son, Caleb King.
Welcome. Well done, family. Well done.
Yeah, they done kept it centered perfectly.
Another thing that he does, you know, just he touches it and all comes out perfect.
All right. One, two, three. One more time, one, two, three.
Speakers must sign up prior to the meeting and provide their names, addresses, and the topics they wish to discuss. Speakers must direct your comments to the board and not to individual members or to the audience. Personal disagreements with individual members or county employees are not a matter of public concern, and personal attacks will not be tolerated. The chairman has the right to limit your comments in the interest of disposing of the county's business in an efficient and respectful manner. Speakers will be allocated three minutes to speak on their chosen topics as they relate to matters pertinent to the jurisdiction of the Board of Commissioners. No questions will be asked by any of the members during the citizen comments. Outbursts from the audience will not be tolerated. Common courtesy and civility are expected at all times. No speaker will be permitted to speak more than three minutes or more than once unless the board votes to suspend this rule. Dr. Ledbetter, do we have people who have signed up tonight?
Yes, sir, we do. We have approximately 13 people who have signed up for the public comment section this evening. Ms. Nadine Cowan, if you would, please step forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I am Nadine Cowan, and I reside at 132 Steelwater Trace in Griffin, Georgia. I've been there for about seven years, and first of all, I want to say thank you to each one of you for what you do for your public service. I appreciate you. I know what you do is hard work. You're taking time from your families tonight to be here, so I appreciate you. I want to discuss, if I may, adequate space for the voters. I have a... I have, I'm a certified poll worker. I'm also certified in the Department of Corrections to be a volunteer, but my background has been in accounting and auditing and forensic auditing and that sort of thing all my entire life. So I'm probably gonna approach this more of a business attitude versus anything that might be political. First of all, I want to mention the four bullet points I want to say about security, about voter privacy, about ease for handicap and the elderly, and also cost effectiveness. We have, in security, the whole time we're working in the polls, we have an open space like this that we prefer to have, because we can watch to make sure, we make sure the voter is secure. We watch out for each other to make sure that we're all secure, and we also make sure the equipment is secure. And one of our main goals is to secure that vote. So we're watching constantly, even though we might be checking you in, I'm still scanning the room to make sure everybody else is safe. The space, just early voting is not just the only issue, but we also have the issue with the polls, that have an adequate space for that, too, as well. But early voting is a concern, I'm sorry, is a concern because of the space. And we know that there'll be a lot of people out early voting for the presidential. And we also have things like setup for equipment, we have to set up equipment, take equipment down because of the space that we have. Training, every time we have training, the equipment has to be taken down. Next time you have training, and the state requires us to have these trainings. It's the same training every time, but we still have to have them in case there's anything new that came up. The voter privacy is, we used to have the little curtains, that was great. Now we have the screens, someone 6'5". We need space that we can, and I don't consider, I know I'm not a small woman, but I don't consider myself obese. So to begin into the booth is sometimes, even I'm working there, it's difficult for me to maneuver around the voting booths. So I know it's difficult for the voters as well, and especially for our handicap and for the elderly. And a lot of times, we have handicap and elderly there at the same time. And so we have to plan on, if you have a walker, you should go to this booth. If you have a...
Thank you, ma'am.
Hal Cohen. If you would, step forward and state your name and your address for the record, please.
Thank you for allowing me to come in. I'm Hal Cohen. I live at 132 Stillwater Trace in Griffin, Georgia. Originally a native of Griffin, born here, had been here all my life, but I came back. But I'm here to, the background was, I've had about 35 years of executive experience in business operations, technical operations, and facility management. I'm here to talk about space facilities for our electorate in the central area, particularly in the areas that relate to the logic and accuracy testing of the equipment at the central office. We've got, you know, good office space. I would like to have, say thank you to the Board. There's been some improvements there in the physical office space, in the areas that deal with the real high-security areas, some office privacy areas and security that's been done, and some improvements in the warehouse, particularly for the batteries. I can't emphasize how much that has helped, not having to move extremely heavy batteries around just to have them plugged in, and we're talking about over, you know, 50 or 60 batteries. You know, we going out, we have like 100 we have to test and go out. So that's a big thank you for you. But specifically towards the logic and accuracy area, we have two spaces. One of them basically is entirely just the warehouse, is where you put everything and you let it sit. It is completely full, it's overfull, and it's used for more than it needs to be used for. It not only contains the actual equipment itself, and it's a long list of state-regulated, controlled, managed, state laws that we have to manage that equipment with. The, and I am not an employee, I am a part-time assistant, I mean, make sure of that. I work temporarily to help them during the elections, and help manage the inventory, and help with the logic and testing for the employees of the election department. So we also have the baggage, the bags that come in have to be maintained. We have equipment that is not being used, because it may be broken, or it may be, it has to be stored in the same thing, all controlled by very secure state regulations. Then we have to test the equipment during elections. That's what the logic and accuracy is all about. To do that, you basically have to tame the equipment, you have to depackage it, you set up every single precinct individually, exactly as it would be in the precinct on the day of the voting. And you go through a very detailed procedure of how to test it and make sure all that equipment is working perfectly before it goes back. Then you have to package it all back up, you have to seal it according to state regulations, and then you have to maintain it separately.
Thank you, sir. Okay. All right.
Geraldine Mangum.
Good evening. I'm Geraldine Mangum, 114 Ruby Way, Griffin, Georgia. I'm an administrative pastor at North Griffin Community Baptist Church at Highland. I'm also a certified chaplain with American Chaplains Association. I work with voting, and I've worked with voting for some time now, and the space is our concern. We have a major election that's coming up, and for advanced voting, we're really only able to take 14 people in at a time, 14 voting stations. And there's a problem with that, because in the 2020 election, I came to work at 6:30 in the morning, and there were people already all the way down the walkway, and before time to open, there were people at the street. And so that's a situation, because people are out in the elements. Also, as far as training is concerned, we don't have the necessary space to train. Training is mandatory by the state, so therefore, we're borrowing space now from UGA to do what we have to do. Also, audits, when we have audits, we have to audit after the election. There's a Spalding County mandate, there's also a state mandate, and for this election that's coming up, if the candidates decide that they want additional count, then we have to count that as well. We had over 30,000 people vote in the last presidential election. We have about 52,000 that's on the road. So we don't know who's gonna show up or anything like that, but we do need the necessary space to be able to accommodate them. And so we're pleading, please somehow figure out a way for us to have what we need to do. And as they say, security is the situation. The last presidential election I was in, we got paid, haven't paid because of the threats and the different things that were going on. So please, 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 see what you can do, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Carol Jones.
Carol Jones, 1611 Pine Brook Drive, Griffin. My purpose for coming tonight is that it relates to the Spalding County Animal Shelter. I've had several issues that I don't think should have happened out there. It's nothing to do with employees, I guess it's procedure. Here's what happened, I was looking for an adult cat, my older cat died. I go to the shelter, looking out there, they had cats, but they were having, we were having to wait till they went through with their kittens and they were available, they did call me. My daughter and I went that day, chose a cat, took it home. Within 24 hours of taking that cat to my house, it was crying out, meowing all night long, I thought it was in heat, extremely hungry. Fed my other cat the same thing, problem. The third day after a weekend, I went straight to my vet. I was greatly concerned about the health and welfare of this cat. He asked me, did they tell me she was in heat? I said, no, they told me that I had signed an agreement for the vet in Barnesville to take care of her, spade her. He took her back, and he come got me, and he said, Ms. Jones, this cat has got worms badly. I need to do blood work, because I don't know completely how to treat her. I said, sure. I always thought that animals were set up to be able to leave the shelter, because we would want them to have a home. So that didn't happen. Got through that process, I'm waiting to hear from the vet in Barnesville. They were sending me notices, it was gonna be at least July before they could take her in. I had paid for that, and that was fine. Okay, I needed to go out of town, so I called my vet, and I said, can you do it as soon as possible, I'll pay you? They said, yes, they worked me in. The morning I took her out there, they called me and said, Ms. Jones, we got a real problem with this cat. I said, what is the cat? The cat's already been spayed, the cat's got a chip, and the chip doesn't belong to you. I said, what? I'm shocked. So they said, you need to come get her. I went and got her, they said, when I left from there, I said to one vet, it was the same one that saw the day of I first took her, I said, I don't know what to do. He said, well, you could take this cat back to the shelter and tell them this is all messed up, and they ought to straighten it out. I thought about it, I took her home, I had lost confidence in the shelter, I took her to my house, and if they can find out who owns this cat, if it's not Minnie, I'll take it to them. I don't want somebody else's cat. But I love, I mean, she's very sweet, and I am fine with it, but there's problems at the shelter.
Thank you, ma'am.
Jay Paul Foles.
Sir, Jay Paul Foles, I'm at 146 Jasper Court. I'm one of the poll managers for the elections, and here to support the additional space that we need, that I think is now is used by the Extension Service. And so we want to support that move to acquire that space for the election office, because we want to not have citizens wait in line for four hours to vote in November. We don't think that the space that we have now is gonna allow, you know, for any kind of timely voting to happen. It's just gonna take forever, and so, you know, I think if you're in line, you get to vote, and so I don't want to be there till 12:00 at night either. So, you know, like a lot of people, so we want to make that thing, you know, as efficient as possible, and so that, you know, we have that space, and we can set up the amount of machines, allow scanners, and it just takes time to do that, and we need the space for that. So we're all in support of that space, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Cindy Phillips.
Cindy Phillips, 4463 West Ellis Road, Griffin. I'm also a poll worker and a manager at one of my precincts. And I'm also here to say, we need a bigger place for our polling. We have the senior citizens, and we've used that building one time before for election. And we can use that big section on that backside again. And we need space, because I'm like everybody else, I don't want to be out here 12:00 at night, and nobody else wants to be out there in them long lines. But we need the space for everybody to be able to come in and be out of the elements, because you don't never know if it's gonna be hot, cold, raining, you just don't know. And we need the space. And so that's my point to y'all, and I hope y'all take it into consideration and help us to get a place, for, not just for us, but for people that vote. Y'all come in and vote, I don't know, some of y'all come in and vote early. I know, I've seen some of you. So, you know, and early voting's gonna be, it's gonna be big, because we do have a presidential this year. So, you know, we need the space, and we've been dealing and fighting for space for years. And so I hope that y'all can come up with something to help us to get that space that we need. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Margaret Blue.
My name is Margaret Blue, I live at 620 Wendy Hill Road. I want to thank the Commissioners, I also want to thank Chair Davis for this opportunity to speak to you. I have been a poll worker, poll manager, employee in Pike County, and now Spalding County, than more years than I can imagine. We have a situation, and let me just check my notes here. Since 2020 election, our state has incorporated new state legislature to help protect voter integrity. Spalding County Supervisor of Elections has trained her staff and the poll workers. So we are now thoroughly trained as we move through the primaries towards the presidential election in November of this year. As we fast approach the presidential election, advanced voting, we have 14 weeks, and here are my concerns, I'm very much concerned. I've been on those front lines with this team, I know what it's like. But Spalding County has used the Athletic Hall of Fame adjacent to the Board of Election Office for all of the advanced voting. This space was not adequate in 2022, and for our runoffs, we experienced wait times in excess of an hour and 45 minutes, because Jay and I were out there, we know. Some complaints were written and sent to us, but will it suffice in the presidential election, advanced voting, this year? Our election supervisor had the foresight and experience that with the projected volume of voters coming out, the space is not gonna suffice. I agree with her. Poll workers are trained to watch the voters in line, the age of the voters, voters with disabilities, voters that are having concerns as they're in line. Those tasks are just a few of the things we're trained to do. We also have to get the voters through the process of the poll pad identification, to the ballot marking devices, to the scanners where they successfully vote. Most important of all is the well-being of our voters, the staff, and the poll worker. Present guidelines require us to transport the scanners and the equipment daily from a secure location in the election office up the sidewalk to the Hall of Fame, and then back down at the end of the day. That leaves us exposed, and that is not good to the elements, not only to... Thank you, appreciate it.
Emma Jean Foster-Taylor.
Good evening. I am Emma Jean Foster-Taylor, and I reside at 118 Sherbrooke Way in Griffin. I have been retired since 2018, and I was in, I was in banking for all those years. And in 2018, I became manager for a precinct and started working with it, early advanced voting, where I became a manager. Therefore, I have seen many different situations. As was mentioned earlier, during the last presidential election, lines were so long, the heat was unbearable, there was a lot of stress that was placed not only on the workers, we are volunteers, we get a small compensation, but there was stress placed on us as well as those that came out to vote. So I ask you to please consider another location that will be beneficial to all of us. Advanced voting, as you know, is a key element in providing all voters of Spalding County the opportunity to... the opportunity to plan their schedule and get out to vote early, which will relieve a lot of standing in line on election day. Having a secure voting location with ample space will assist in housing equipment and reducing voters' wait time. Additional secure space is key to the voting process running smoothly regardless of unknown situations. And unknown situations do occur. If a medical situation exists, that doesn't stop voting. It has occurred and we had to try to work around that situation. So please, please consider providing additional space here in Spalding County for the citizens, the citizens of Spalding County. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Theron Bond. I live at 423 Tilney Avenue in Griffin here, and I'm also a poll manager here in Spalding County. I am not involved with the early voting, but we've got a serious situation going on if we cannot expand our facilities. I would like to, you know, reiterate what these ladies and gentlemen have said before. I couldn't agree with them anymore. This is going to be a very heavy election and I can only imagine what wait times might be. It's also important that there's ample time for there to be preparation for the equipment and also the advertising of where early voting might be. If you don't get this done soon enough, there could be accusations of voter disenfranchisement if the word doesn't get out in time. And that's a concern that I have. I was the poll manager at the Gary Reed Fire Station, Precinct 16. We had a fire truck catch on fire there. We had to move our facility to Faith Baptist Church on McIntosh Road. It was a big issue trying to make sure that everybody knew where the voting precinct was going to be. And that's really all I have, other than what's been said before. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
I believe it's Brett Milner.
My name is Brett McKidmore. I live at 1112 Skyline Drive here in Griffin, Georgia, and I am the current president of the Griffin Youth Soccer Association. You guys have been very supportive of our program in the past. I think about a couple of things immediately. Got a well for some irrigation. Purchased some lights for us to get all of our fields lit, so I'm thankful for you guys. Also thankful for Robbie and TJ and Greg and Kelly for their support of us. They're just great to work with. Just a little bit of background, we typically have about 400 to 500 members per season. We run two seasons and I think that's something that unique to the soccer program. Our seasons start in February, with signups in January. We consider that the spring season. And then we have the fall season, which we're in the middle of right now. So this season, we'll probably get about 625 members or kids playing soccer. And that's really because we get high schoolers back. So kind of doing the math there, we're looking at about 1,100 participants plus family members. It's a great place to be on a Saturday for sure. And I think we might have the largest number of participants in sports programs that we manage. I think that's right, if not the top. So one thing that's unique to us is we do run two seasons. So that puts a lot of pressure on the fields. We're out there eight months a year essentially, so not a whole lot of time for fields to recover, especially if we have a drought. We have a drought, you know, if we have any kind of challenges with weather. And I think another thing that's unique to us is we're the only sport that practices on the same fields that we play on. So just a tremendous amount of pressure on those seven, seven fields at Tias. So we met with the advisory board last week just to kind of chat about things. We began, we're beginning to develop some field maintenance goals out there. I think Tias opened in 1999, so that's 25 years. My kids started out there in 2000, came through the program, played in high school, so really took advantage of soccer in Griffin. So the fields are showing a little wear and tear. You know, it's like I said, 25 years. And so we kind of took the initiative, you know, we've got a great resource with the turf Griffin Experiment Station. So we asked to meet, we asked to meet with them out at the fields and one of their turf grass extension specialists met with us and it was a great resource. And what we...
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
Good evening. My name is Mary Passmore. I reside at 858 Lakeside Road in Griffin. I'm here to pretty much say, talk about the election space that we need. I am an employee with the Spalding County Board of Education and Voter Registration Office. I stand here in support of the going, with going forward with full speed with the expansion space for the upcoming election, primarily the early voting and advanced voting for October 15th through November 1st. Those who was around in 2020 election are aware of the overflow and the frustration of the voters that experienced long lines, heat, exhaustion, and the elderly and so on just to vote. By increasing the space, this will not completely eliminate the long lines and frustration, but will shorten the length and time for voters. If there is any way possible, please consider expanding the space next door as quickly as possible to ease the tension, time, and frustration for the voters. Your immediate attention to this matter will be deeply, deeply appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I've got some documents here. It's not the first time you've seen them and I hope it'll be the last time, but that's up to you. I have a creek that goes across my property...
Mr. Morgan, would you, would you state your name?
Robert Morgan, I live at 19 Johnston Road, Griffin, Georgia.
Thank you, sir.
I have a creek that goes across my property. In 1995, y'all signed an easement with me to come on that property, keep that creek cleaned out. This is a creek that's ever flowing and it's fed by an Ortesian spring across the road. It runs year round. It's not like what you call a runoff. And I understand y'all are working on one of those yet, but it's not there. All I'm trying to do is get this thing cleaned out. It come out once a year, that's all. The details in prison up here, swing blades, bush racks, whatever, to clean it out and that's all you come out, one time a year. And I can't get it done this year because says y'all are working on a storm runoff program, which, you know, I don't know how that's going to affect me. I live in the country. But I would like to have this thing taken care of, done away with. The other alternative I ask is if you're not going to keep it up, release the, release the easement you have on it back to me and get out until you want to be able to come on my property. I'll take care of it myself. I pay somebody to do it, but you agreed to do this, not me. But that's been years ago. So all I got to say, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm going to do my best for this name, so please forgive me. Sid Nu Ali.
Hi, my name is Sid Nu Ali and I live at 4389 Newton Road and I worked at 4319 Newton Road for the last 25 years. I'm here against petition for the alcohol ordinance. Is this the one with that or they mixed me up?
He's...
Alcohol ordinance, okay.
Correct. He is making a statement against the alcohol. This is the place to be, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay, anyway, I heard they are changing the law for the alcohol from the Spalding County law to state law by reducing the distance between the churches and the residence. I think this is not a good idea. We are worried for our youngsters especially. We need their healthy life. We don't want to give more licenses for shorting their distances and spoiling their future. Since in business for the last 25 years, I have experienced a lot of things like that. And when I talked to Ms. Tanya in the Spalding County, there's one business coming across the street of 4319 and they already put the sign, Coming a Bottle Shop. When I called Ms. Tanya, she replied my email that there is no license, there is no any... Nothing has been issued so far and they are not following the law. So when they're breaking the law before they are getting into it, why we are changing it? Why we are giving more license to the alcohol people? Are we messing up our new generation? What happened day before yesterday, we know, young 20-year-old kid? I can't believe this. And this is my all supporting neighbors who are against that, they all signed. Plus, I have a Spalding County report here, how the employees, they steal alcohol and they supply to the youngsters. And this is going on for you. And this is the detail of it. So I urge commissioners and Mr. Manager, Council Manager, that please don't change the law. Laws are made to follow the law, not to break the law. By changing the law from distance, lowering the distance between the residents, I think there will be, everywhere there will be the license next to the resident. And we are, we want to grow our children good. We don't want to grow our children in the wrong way. It's all up to you whether you want to get more money by giving the licenses or you want to help support the youngsters' health and their future. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, there is no one else who have signed up this evening.
Thank you, everybody. Item number seven. Consider approval of the minutes of the Spalding County Board of Commissioners Special Call Work Session, an extraordinary session on June 17th, 2024, and Spalding County Board of Commissioners Special Call Meeting on June 20th, 2024. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify, excuse me, signify by raising your hand. Five zero, motion carries. Thank you. Item number eight, new business. Consider reappointment of Matthew Perry for Region 4 Emergency Medical Services Advisory Council for a two-year term ending June 30, 2026. Dr. Ledbetter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Matt Perry has served for the last two years in this role and it is staff's recommendation that we move forward with Mr. Perry serving as the MS Director from Wellstar in this position.
Motion to reappoint.
I have a motion to reappoint. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero, reappointment is made. Item number two, consider request for a out-of-state use of the Spalding County Motor Coach. Lauren, Ms. Brown, excuse me.
Hey, good evening, everybody. It's great to be here this evening and thank you for each and every one of you for everything that you do for us. Per policy, all motor coach trips that are going out of state require Board of Commissioners approval. Our Macon Trucks Travel Club has put in a request to go to Tennessee, to Chattanooga, and to Rock City on September 17th for one night. The cost of the trip is $1,288 and that covers the cost. And then so just requesting your official approval for them to make this trip.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
So we, in our new budget, we're supposed to have hired a bus driver. And I also read that in the policy it states that the, or the entity that is having the trip is responsible for that, their salary. I don't know how that, how that's working if we're paying them already. Can somebody explain that to me?
They are on, they are a full-time employee, but the trips do pay for the salaries and benefits for the event. So he is available full-time to carry the silver sneakers, but he is also working with TJ when he is not driving the bus. So he is not just sitting idle. He is actually working for the county and performing work for...
But you didn't answer my question.
Please forgive me.
You didn't answer my question. My question is, how are we able to take, we're paying, the county is paying them full-time already.
That's correct.
But it says in the contract that the people taking the trip are responsible for the salary of the operator as well as the use of the bus. How is that being broken out? How does that get back to us if they're going on a trip for four days, but we're still paying them anyway? No, I'm saying, for example, if they were going on a four-day trip.
If it's the example of the four-day, then the rental of the bus plus the rental of the individual would come back to the county and to the general fund and augment the salary for that individual.
Okay, so that's what I needed to know. All right, that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero.
Thank you.
Item number three, consideration of a proposal for building official services from Charles Abbott Services. Ms. Reddick? Director, I'm sorry.
I wasn't sure if you were asking me to speak, so I should have been up there and followed up. And we do have representatives from Charles Abbott with us tonight, Jeremy and Kyle, if you want to hear from them. But it was my proposal to re-instate Charles Abbott and Associates for our building official and inspection services. And the reason is because in my experience with Charles Abbott, they bring, how should I say, a sense of calm to sometimes what can be a very chaotic experience and process. And I wanted to help add balance back into community development by making this recommendation. And would you like to hear from...
If he's here, go ahead. Come on.
He loves to talk in public. I like him.
Good evening, Commissioners. Yeah, we would just like the opportunity to serve Spalding County. We do bring probably a staff of probably 12 folks that are here regionally that can help support the team. That's building officials, certified building officials, plan reviewers, inspectors, things like that, so we can, you know, we can beef up, we can ramp up when, when times are tough and we can ramp down, just depending on the workload. So we would just appreciate the opportunity, consideration for...
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
You have a comment.
Do I have a motion to approve? Then we're getting discussion.
Not from this end of the table.
I'm sorry?
Not from this end of the table. We want to have a discussion.
We got to discuss something, but we also, we're also not going to move on.
Okay, let's, let's kind of break this down and go ahead and let's discuss.
So if I may first, I'm feeling some kind of way about Charles Abbott because we hired them before and they left us hanging on a limb. And, and I get it, COVID and blah, 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 but we didn't, we didn't get any services from them for almost 18 months. but we didn't, we didn't get any services from them for almost 18 months. And I know at the same time, they were still being able to do whatever it is they needed to do for the city and they retained them. But they were not very helpful at all with us in trying to get what we needed to get done. Now, I understand that initially, they were supposed to be doing building inspection, code enforcement, and we put all, code enforcement, and I don't think they were doing planning, but I knew that they were doing inspect, inspections. And we were just left hanging, you know? I, I get it. So, the guy who was here got promoted or whatever, but in my opinion, they did not make enough effort to make sure that we had somebody to do what it is. And that is part of the problem that we've had with planning and development. The second thing that I have a problem with about this is, you know, with all due respect, Sylvia, you're not going to be here in two weeks. So I have a real problem with you making a recommendation to us for somebody and you're not going to be here to babysit them. So, yes, I get it, we need someone to help us with inspections. And I, and I get it that we need someone to help us with, whatever the other thing is, is that they do. But this feels like we're trying to fix something. We need a planning and development person. That is, their job is to review plans to maybe not do the engineering part, but we should have hired an engineer. We said we were going to hire an engineer and now we're, we're trying to go outside to do that. I don't have a good feeling about it. The most secure that I have felt about planning and development has been the four months that she's been here. So, so, and I, so I'm just being very real. And because you're leaving the house, nothing personal, there's nobody to babysit them.
Can I, before you answer that, Sylvia, I just want to jump in and ask the gentleman. I don't even know if you were aware of the relationship. Oh, I think Commissioner Flowers is saying with Charles Abbott.
I'm not, I'm not familiar with the issue that, the 18 months.
So my question also loads to that because you didn't know, I understand that. But what, what could we do differently? Or what, what commitment can you give us so that, you know, obviously you see how we're feeling?
Right.
What commitment guarantee can you give us?
So, maybe a little backstory, if it's on the 18-month period, that you said we weren't fulfilling an obligation, is that what the concern was? There was, I'm not sure what, what that entails.
Okay, so we had lots of properties, buildings that needed to be inspected. They were also supposed to be doing code enforcement, which everybody knows what the nightmare has been with code enforcement. That left us with a period of almost two years waiting to get a code enforcement person. And then we've struggled with two, at least two or three code enforcement individuals. I, I just think that this needs to be something that we talk about strategically, how we move forward. If you were at the helm, I wouldn't have a problem with this because I know you would babysit it. But I'm, I'm not feeling warm and fuzzy about it.
But I want the gentleman to finish the, finish this.
So if it's about the code enforcement, my understanding was that the code enforcement was, they, that was a, an agreement that that was taken away from Charles Abbott and brought back in-house with the Marshals Office.
No, no, the Marshals Office was after we had not had service from Charles Abbott for almost 18 months. So, so yeah, I, that's all, that's all I had.
We also, the, the Charles Abbott employee that was here on site, there were allegedly a lot of problems that caused there interpersonally. And we had some people that left our employment claiming that he was the reason. So, it wasn't just not doing the job, but like also causing specific interpersonal issues. And, yeah, I'm just, I didn't, I didn't expect to see, you know, this, much less it'd be the same company coming back, knowing how it went last time. But it, it doesn't seem like you were brought up to speed on that, what happened before. So, I don't know, I, I, this definitely deserves more discussion.
More research.
I didn't hear what you said, Commissioner Johnson.
No, I think, I agree with, with the board. I think it probably deserves more, more strategy of how we move forward and we have to really think this thing through.
It's not quite, it's not quite a no, but I don't think we're ready for it.
It's for conversation, like I said, I mean, I'm not, you know, it may be something that could work out, but right now, we got to iron out some things before we move forward in some, you know, in, in a new contract.
And we've always got some different personnel there and it might be a different situation.
Something we may agree on.
May I speak, Chairman? So, so that I'm clear with the board. And it was my understanding, and it would take one of you to correct me, is that Charles Abbott was relieved of their contract. They were fired. That's why they didn't service for 18 months.
For non-performance.
They were served after, they were fired after.
And so then, but now, there is my understanding that this was just ratifying the, the agreement, which means that right now, if they aren't doing it, we don't have anybody in place that's doing it. So, that's something you'll obviously want to discuss, but it's just, so I appreciate what you're saying, but the, the, the lead that I had to follow was that this was just a ratification decision. So, I just want you to know that if it's not Charles Abbott, and obviously that's your choice, you will want to make a different decision on who, who's going to do it. Because right now, that means you would have nobody.
So who's doing the inspections now?
Charles Abbott.
Under what contract?
It, it's not under a contract that you have ratified. It's, NOVA was, the discussion that we had had was NOVA was not providing us with the fee schedule that we needed to move to based on the latest legislative agreement from the state. We are still utilizing square footage for permit issuance. And we've got to make that transition very quickly. I, I would like to share with something because Jeremy was our inspector before Charles Abbott moved Jeremy to another location and put the individual that we were struggling with to do our inspections. We have been given an assurance by Charles Abbott that Jeremy's going to stay with us. Jeremy is the individual that we need for inspections. He does a great job. He, he is also bringing to the county the updated formulas that we will need to employ for our new permit fees, which NOVA was not doing. We had been asking NOVA for a considerable, for almost a little over a year to support and help us with the addition of the fees. But Jeremy was here, left because Charles Abbott promoted Jeremy. Thank you, Jeremy, for getting promoted. Bad for us because we lost him. But we also lost the ability of Charles Abbott to support us during the 18 months that, that the board is discussing. I would give Charles Abbott kudos because they did come and support us during the tornadoes. So when the tornadoes came through and destroyed our community, Charles Abbott stood, stepped up and provided the software for us to manage all of the work orders that were coming through as a result of the destruction that was, that impacted our community. Kudos to them for doing that.
Did, was that pro bono?
It was pro bono for the first 60 days, yes ma'am. They, they stepped up and immediately provided us with the software to support us. We were in the middle of a transition from, from City Tech to another software package when the tornadoes hit. There was no time to continue the, the transition for the software and Charles Abbott stood up and handed us the keys back to the software and said, "Let's go back to work with the software." They did that even though they were not the inspectors. NOVA was the inspecting company for the county at that time and Charles Abbott just handed us the software and said, "Y'all go back to work because we recognize the challenge that the county's under." So they, they did step up. And then when we went back to Charles Abbott and asked specifically about the, the permit fees based on the latest, latest changes from legislators, Charles Abbott was able to provide us with examples of other jurisdictions and how they are working through the formulas to satisfy the requirements for, for changing their permit fees. And Jeremy's been very instrumental in helping us work through those challenges. So, kudos to CAA.
So, kudos to them for that, did we pay them?
We have paid them.
Okay, so, back to my point. After Charles Abbott, we had NOVAs, which was another bust. So, so then it turned into a three-year, no inspection, no one in-
NOVA was inspecting. And kudos to Greg from NOVA for doing a great job at the inspections because he was doing a great job at inspections. That is what he is very, very good at. And had, had no issues with the inspection side. The challenge that we were running into was that the state of Georgia changed the law with respect to how we could issue permits. We couldn't, we can no longer utilize square footage to determine the cost of a permit. We have been working through, in the background to understand, as is most of the state, to understand how to create the formulas to appropriately manage the permit fees. We're not the only jurisdiction that's struggling with that.
And, and, and that's fine, but I, I just think that, I'm not, I'm not comfortable with this contract. I read through it, there's some things, I mean, we said in our budget, we're going to hire an engineer. Okay, so, but this, this contract talks about them providing engineering services. And doesn't talk about, well, it, to some degree, it talks about how much they're paid an hour, but that's not for, necessarily for engineering consulting.
Correct.
This, this, this needs to be tabled.
Yeah, I agree, that's, that was my suggestion.
And, and I say that, and I, not any disrespect to what Sylvia has said, but this isn't the first time that we haven't had somebody at the helm. I'm just not comfortable with none of us having the expertise to know that they're doing the job that we think is on this paper.
Maybe a little step further, I mean, maybe we should maybe consider having a work session with them involved, have a sit-down to let, we lay out what our expectations are. I don't know if all of me that was done from the onset, but you know, maybe a situation as we look at the contract with them present, so everybody knows what's expected of them. So, and maybe, you know, the agreement doesn't have to be so many years or whatever. I mean, I think maybe, I'm not saying let's not do it, but I think there should be more work put into it before we agree or disagree.
Ms. Flowers-Taylor, did you make a motion to table?
I make a motion to table.
I'll second.
All right. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand.
And I would like to add a work session or, or also in, to that also agenda.
We will ask Jeremy and CAA to be here on August the 5th.
Sounds good.
And for clarity, until then, is, is, is Charles Abbott free to continue our inspection and building official services?
We will need someone to inspect for us.
As he is, yes.
But you have an agreement with them already to do that?
Correct.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate you being back with us.
And congratulations, by the way. We're sad to see you go, but congratulations, it's a big deal.
Item number four. Consider approval of the updated alcohol ordinance. Ms. Wyndham?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So, based on our last discussion regarding the alcohol ordinance, I made the changes that you had suggested. There were still some questions that I had. So, that is in the, the updated version that you, that you have before you.
Reagan, can you pull that up by chance? Thank you. So everybody knows, this is a big issue that we've been working on for a while, trying to get it exactly the way we want it. This is multiple pages and we're down to a few questions that the attorney needs us to provide answers for so that we can get it the way we want it. And this will be first reading?
If you voted on it tonight, it would be the first reading, yes, sir.
Okay. But my, so everybody understands, my sensing is, I'm not real crazy about voting on things that I haven't seen directly in front of me, even though we may answer the question.
So, are we talking about it or not?
Yes, yes, we're going to talk about it. What I, hoping to do is that Sylvia, I mean, that Stephanie will pull it, will get it up and then we will see the question, answer the question, go to the next question, go to the next question. And I think- I hope to, tonight, to be through with all the questions, so then we have it ready to go. Yeah, Reagan, yeah, thank you, thank you. Yes, I can, I, thank you, I can see that. Is that big enough for most of the people in the audience to be able to see what it says? All right.
So, the, the first comment, we had talked about whether day spas and beauty salons would be able to serve alcoholic beverages, not at a cost to their, to their customers or clients, but as a service. And so I had added a definition of beauty shop or beauty salon and also on a few pages back, a definition for a day spa. And that would be, if you wanted to, to, to leave that, then we would just need to add that, that as an exception to the requirement for a license for those particular types of facilities.
So, for those particular types of facilities, they would still have to have a license to serve alcohol, not to sell, to serve.
Correct.
That's what we're saying. So, in doing so, I mean, they do that at nail salons, at hairdressers. So, I think there needs to be some definition of what these beauty shop, beauty salon is because it's, you know, that's, it kind of-
I've never, I didn't know that you could actually serve at a beauty salon. I didn't know that.
Many do. You never been to a salon where they gave you a glass of champagne or-
Day spas, yes, but not beauty salon.
So, the, the beauty shop or beauty salon definition that I, that I used is one that is any premises where one or more persons engage in the occupation of cosmetology.
Okay, so that covers, that covers that.
And then the, the day spa definition is a business that provides a variety of services for the purposes of improving health, beauty and relaxation through personal care treatments such as massages and facials.
Okay, that, that, that pretty much covers.
Let me just make, I'm going to think about this for a second. Okay, so the person that's actually serving the alcohol, are they allowed to drink it too?
I would think that would depend on their licensing provisions.
Okay, it gets a little sticky, I'm just going to say, if there's other liability issues that come about while you're providing a service.
I, I've, I've never had any esthetician or massage therapist drinking while I was getting, having a service.
Okay, I want to make sure we're clear in what we're saying.
Do we want to say that they can't?
Absolutely, they cannot. As a professional, they should not be able to do that.
Ms. Quinn?
Who's drinking at work? That's what I'm trying to do. Somebody's supposed to be drinking at work.
I want to make sure the language is clear. If we're saying that they can actually sell it and serve it.
No, no, we're not saying sell it, we're saying serve it, okay?
If they're serving it. You want to make sure that they are not, and also, I mean, we've got to be clear here.
So, we're going to say for sure, we're not going to allow the server to be drinking.
Right. And it may be, and to you all, it might seem like it's, you know, pretty, you know, I mean, standard, but I think it needs to be written out because you, you don't, you don't want any loopholes here. Because you know, sure enough, something's going to happen and it's going to fall back and then, and you're going to look at a bigger problem here. The services aren't done right and there you are.
Part of, part of the ordinance is that employees have to remain alcohol-free. I mean, that's part of your job. And I just think, I hear what you're saying, but I think that what employee who sells alcohol or serves alcohol is going to want their employee to be drinking.
You don't know what's going to happen on the premises.
No, you don't, but you might lose your job because you engaged.
A lot of stuff could happen, I'm just saying. But yes, you're right, that should be between employee and employee.
Ms. Quinn, do you have an objection to having it in there?
No, I, I don't, I just, I think that it's just out there.
All right. I'm a T-tower, so I'm the wrong person to ask about anything.
Let's go on to the next one.
Okay, so, the, we, we had talked before about the, the possibility of licensed alcoholic beverage caterers. That's actually the, what, what, what mobile bars are, are defined under state law. So, we, we have a definition of a caterer as any person who prepares, prepares food and furnishes non-alcoholic beverages for consumption off the premises of a food service facility or restaurant for a special event. So, there are provisions for caterers to serve alcohol with a separate license. But do we want that to only be for caterers who also have an on-premise license or create a separate off-premise licensing protocol? So, there, there is the licensed alcoholic beverage caterer provisions pursuant to Georgia, Georgia code. And I, I believe I mentioned later that that is probably something that we would want to, the mobile beverage cart, alcoholic beverage cart issue is probably something that we would want to revisit later as, as a-
Because it comes under food truck, kind of. I mean, you know.
It's, it, there is, there's a lot more to it. It's, it, there is, there's a lot more to it, and I think that we, that could hold us up for a couple of more months on revisions to this ordinance, but we, it is something that we could come back and plug in later in one of our reserved sections.
Yes, we want to add it later.
So, do we want to continue to say caterer means any person who prepares food and furnishes non-alcoholic beverage for consumption?
Pursuant to the, the current, the ordinance, even as it's revised, without that licensed alcoholic beverage caterer definition, that's what, I, I think that's what we should leave the caterer definition as.
Okay.
And then we can come back in and add the licensed alcoholic beverage caterer language later. On the private golf club definition, we had talked about the fact that there are beverage carts that are in existence at private golf clubs now. So, I simply added language to that definition that says, "and which may, which may sell alcoholic beverages to its patrons while on the property of the private golf club from a mobile, mobile beverage cart."
And that will require license?
The license goes with the, with the club.
But does the server going to have to have a license?
That's going to be up to you if we have the, the server permit.
But they would have the same permit that somebody who was serving inside of the club would have.
Correct. That's correct.
But right now, they don't have to have it.
That's correct.
Right now, they don't, the golf cart person doesn't have to have anything.
Okay, but if you're serving, serving alcohol to anybody, you need to have a permit to serve it, whether you're giving it to them or whether they're buying it, and it's not in a building.
Currently, we do not have a server permit rule.
We want to have that.
Okay, so like, if, if there's a seventeen-year-old working in Longhorns, and you order a drink, well, you got to get it from the bar anyway. But they can bring it to you, can't they? Or does a bartender have to bring it to you?
There are, there are age, yes, there are age stipulations there in the ordinance already, and.
See, I'm a little bit.
You should, you should be able to go to the bartender and have the bartender be the one that has served them, you know what I'm saying?
Okay.
I'm concerned about the golf cart out on the fourteenth hole issuing alcohol. That's the one who I'm talking about. Fourteenth hole out there, and they're just giving, all right, here's a six-pack, here's seventeen beers, draw them business, the whole thing, somebody's, so, that's why I asked the question. Do they have any obligation to?
To only serve one drink, or to give them six, or?
We're getting the weed stuff.
I'm not sure what, where there's a problem.
The, the, under the definition of private golf club, by adding that to that definition, they are under the same rules and regulations that, that, that operate for that private golf club.
So, the server still has to meet the age requirements and stuff like that?
Yes.
I'm good?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, just adding that to that definition actually puts that beverage cart under the same rules as the golf club on premise.
So, does it say in here that the server can refuse, has the right to refuse if you've?
If you're intoxicated, yes. That, that's in the ordinance.
So, that's anywhere where there's a server?
It is, yes, ma'am.
All right. Hold on.
I had, Commissioner Flowers-Taylor had asked before why we had to have a survey when we were looking at distances, and I had said very matter-of-factly that that was Georgia law, and believed that it was, because I'm a real property lawyer for twenty-five years, and that only makes perfect sense to me. But it is no longer Georgia law that, that an actual survey is required. And, and our, our ordinance honestly does not, didn't require a survey, it requires a scale drawing, and an engineer is the only one that can actually do a scale drawing as, and that's what the city, I looked at the City of Griffin's ordinance, and they, their requirement is also for a scale drawing. So, my questions just were regarding whether, what, what you wanted to do with that, since you had raised the issue when we last spoke about the ordinance.
The, the, I think the intent here is just to bring us in line with the Georgia state law, so whatever their distance.
As far as distances, but this is, I'm, I'm talking specifically about how you measure those distances, not what the distances actually are.
So, it used to be as the crowns fly from the front door of one spot to the other.
Well, that is specifically defined, whether it is from boundary line to boundary line, it's the most straight line distance on the ground, that, that's defined in the ordinance, but it's, how are we going to require people to tell us what that distance actually is? I mean, are we going to allow them to pace it off and, and say, I think it's approximately, or?
Scale drawing.
A scale drawing.
Mm-hmm. Scale drawing.
That seems like the standard, so.
Yeah.
Okay. There, at, at one point, when we were talking about good standing and what it would require to be in good standing, you mentioned that you need, they needed to have a working video surveillance system to be a requirement for good standing. So, as such, I added that the building official shall also inspect the video surveillance system in the business to ensure compliance with this ordinance, because otherwise you will not know.
I'm good with that.
If you have a working video. Do you want that requirement just for packaged stores and convenience stores, or also for on-premise locations?
All stores.
Can, can we do that? I mean, oh, we?
Did you say something?
All stores.
Yeah, anybody who owns the license.
Right, but if you're going into a restaurant to eat, the question is, do we want, do we insist that you have a camera in there? And I don't think you should do that in a restaurant.
I would agree, but I wanted to be sure.
Yeah. Okay.
I mean, hardly anybody comes in to rob a restaurant.
Why not? I'm just curious, why, why wouldn't you want to? Why not?
If I was the store owner, I'd want it for liability issue.
Me too, I guess I'm looking at it from that.
That's what my issue was.
I'm looking at it from that aspect, too, if I'm the store owner, not necessarily. But even if I'm the person in there dining, I mean, that could be, you could use that in any situation, that they'll be able to help you, rather than hurt you, so I'm not sure why.
It could be a deterrent to diners, to have video surveillance.
Have you put them on camera in a restaurant? Yeah.
People don't want to see, be seen with their girlfriends over there.
What is the penalty?
Well, there you go. Shane's broke it out.
What is the penalty to be? The building official shall also inspect the video surveillance system in the business to ensure compliance with this ordinance.
Well, failure to comply results in your failure to get your license renewed. That's the, that's the, the teeth in that.
That's what I wanted to.
The good standing.
So, and, and, and the reason I say that, because in the City of Griffin, if you sell alcohol, you have to have a video camera on premises, you have to have that thing by the door that tells you how tall somebody is, and there's probably a greater like.
Only if you're selling alcohol to like, take home.
Right, well, that's what I'm saying. So, so I'm saying, in a convenience store, or a gas station, or just a liquor store standalone, for me, that's different than if you go into Old Charlie's and you consume a beverage on, onsite. So, I mean, I just think.
Yeah, maybe, maybe this should only be for places that the alcohol can go home with the person.
That's what, that was my question, is it just package and convenience stores, or also for on-premise consumption?
But also like the, like the growlers and that kind of stuff, so they're not really a?
Growlers are addressed separately.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Anywhere that it can be taken home, maybe we.
Because they do have, I think there's some restaurants that actually have, you open a bottle of wine, you can't take it with you. I mean, I know there's places like, maybe not here, but I know like, Carabas and places like that, you can do it. But that, it's a trend that we probably will be coming here, so we may want to think about that.
Yeah, I, I would agree that that's probably an, an issue that could, that will arise in the future.
Well, again, that, we could, we could literally have it say, like, if alcohol is going to leave with a patron, then you got to have cameras, like.
I think that's.
You know what I'm saying? We can make it more kind of broad.
If the person was like, if something happened to an accident.
That's the first step, let's take that step now. We'll, we'll talk about later.
Because they are drinking, they're taking it home.
A second step when we go revising it. Okay?
The, the prohibited distances, I just adjusted all of those to match the actual language of state law, simply because our, we had, we had feet, they had yards, it was just really, it, it became very confusing when you were trying to read them.
That should just be whatever the state laws.
Whatever the state says, we should say.
So, the only two things that, that, the only two questions that remained were the three hundred feet or more from any private residence unless such residence is itself in a commercial district, or two hundred feet or more from the property line of any branch of any public library. Those are not state law requirements, they were only Spalding County ordinance requirements. So, my question was, should they stay or, or not?
I would like to see the one where residences go, for sure.
Go away. Okay.
So, if the house, if the home is in a commercial district, which that could very well be, I, I mean, I, if the state doesn't have a requirement for the distance from someone's home, where's a hundred yard, hundred, hundred feet come in?
Those are from, any, any of the distances are from church buildings, school buildings, alcohol treatment facilities that are owned by the state, the county, or the municipality. Also, there's from one package store to another package store, and the distance between housing authority, housing authority properties as well.
Not, not to jump backwards here, but what, the, the intent of the videos is to help law enforcement, you know, if that place gets robbed or something. Do, do we want to, do we want to put in a requirement that would require them to turn those videos? I mean, I don't know why they wouldn't, but it's, you got to have somebody that knows how to retrieve them. I, I mean, I know, as a defense attorney, I've gone and said, hey, I want these videos, and everyone would go, ah, I don't know how to get them, and you go, what are you talking about? And now we've got to go have a hearing, because nobody knows how to get the video. Do we want to have, hey, not only do you have to have the video, but you have to let law enforcement use the video and have somebody trained to get the video, you know what I mean, like?
I don't have any.
I mean, that could be part of the inspection, not just, hey, it works, but like, hey, this is how we would get you a copy, you know what I mean, like?
I don't have a problem with that. I would assume that, yes.
But, but it, it should be limited to law enforcement investigations of what happened like, on, on premise. Like, I, I don't like the idea of like, ring cameras being used to like, surveil neighbors across the street, that kind of stuff. You know what I'm saying? Like, you, you know what I mean?
Yeah. Okay. Stephanie, any questions about adding something in there?
Yes, and I will talk with Commissioner Dutton further about that.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
So, now, back to the distance from someone's private residence. I live across the street from the East Griffin Grocery Store, so people be coming out with a beer and popping it in front of my house. So, yeah, I'm, I mean, you know, it, that doesn't make me want to go and get a beer, you know, but I'm just saying, it's because of the way our community is zoned in a lot of spaces, you're going to end up with this. So, I mean, in my brain, I'm trying to think spatially, we had three hundred feet, that's a football field, right?
In zone, in zone.
So, 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 three hundred feet or more from any private residence. So, so Ryan, what is your concern with this?
My, my number one concern with it is, right now, we've got an individual that has been trying to get a liquor license since last year, and has paid his money several times. He brought the, the store to, to sell beer, I'm, I'm saying not liquor, he's, it's just beer and wine, in a bake store. Well, as soon as he got, got it opened up, they drained the reservoir, and now he can't sell beer, and he's just sitting there basically, just maintaining right now. And the whole time, he's already paid out his money, everything was good to go, and, and, and all legality, the way that you walked out of the store, it was legal in this sense here, and I still don't understand why he's waiting on it. But anything, I don't want to put no more, no more stipulations on anybody more than the state requires. If the state don't require them, why should we?
I thought we were moving this just to be in compliance with what the state law was.
Yeah.
I mean, are we, are we creating something additional?
No, these exist currently in your ordinance, so, but they're not in state law, so the question is, should we take them out?
So, I can tell you, because I was here, that we had a couple of people who were not, I mean, I'm just, I don't know another word, they were very Bible something. And so, this was the, 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 the work down, they wanted to be further than that from a residence. The, my, my thought process is, are we living in a different world now?
See alcohol, what?
Yeah, it, it, you know, so, does that mean that just because it's there, you got to drink it? Uh, no, but, you know, you can pretty much buy alcohol anywhere, you can get in a grocery store.
Yes.
I never thought I'd see that, so, so, yeah, I, I agree with you, I just think that when you look at this, when we did three hundred feet, we were like, okay, is that three hundred feet if I'm going straight across, or if, if you got to walk out and get on the sidewalk and walk back down to where they are to get to their door, is that more? So, I think helping people to understand how we're thinking in terms of.
Doesn't that matter if there's schools around and things like that, too? Wouldn't it part of it? I mean, I think it's far as.
That's, that's another thing.
That's a, yeah, that's a totally separate distance requirement.
Okay, yeah. All right.
I hear what you're saying.
But I added a definition for, for measurements as well, so it's the most direct route on the ground.
What would that be?
It is, we talked about it at the last one, so I didn't highlight it this time.
While she's looking, while she's looking that up, all right, so how do we feel? It's not a state law, do we feel we want to add it in ourselves? It's been in there, it's in there today, do we want to continue to keep it in there?
So, the problem is.
I like the idea of the public library, I mean, that's, that, that should go in with the other things, but as far as any private residence, like.
Well, I mean, you know, if you live in a private residence and it's zoned, it's in a zone that's already commercial, and we have lots of properties that, that are that way. You know, that, I mean, start talking about Dollar General, building a store right next to Family Dollar, there's a residence right across the street, on North Hill Street, there's two, a residence right behind it on Armstead, and you can just look over and see in the window. So, so, that's because that street is zoned commercial.
Yeah.
So, we need to figure something, you know, are we going to say that if you're in R1 zoning, or if you're in an established residence, if you're in a subdivision, I think we need to be specific about that, because, you know, basically, if our zoning is messed up, you can put one anywhere.
Cam?
I don't have heartburn with it one way or the other, so.
So, what is, Ryan, you're saying?
Me either, I'm, I'm.
You'd like to cut it out?
So, so I actually.
Sheriff, I hate to bring it, I know you're doing something else, but do you need it in there, the three hundred feet or more from any private residence unless such residence is itself in a commercial district? Do you need that distant, do you need that in there for what you're trying to do? I don't mean to put you on the spot, but.
We're talking about Jay there.
Right. Take, take a look at that, whichever way the sheriff wants to go, I think is a good answer for us.
So, so this says "commercial district," it doesn't say "commercial zoning."
Right.
So, that's different.
What does that mean?
That's, that's crossroad, commercial crossroads.
Yeah, is that crossroad a commercial district, even though it's different zones?
I just, I don't, that's. Okay. No, no, you're good, I just, in case you had some immediate thoughts on it.
So, "commercial district" to me means it's a strip mall, or it's at a four-way intersection, or something like that.
Village node.
Village node.
But, but. Or a, a loft apartment above a, a restaurant, or a package store, or a convenience store.
Yeah, that's a little hard. Okay, I, I got nothing, whatever Ryan say he wants.
All right.
Let's take it out.
Let's take Jay out.
Let's take it out, and if anybody thinks any, we'll get two readings.
Let's leave Kay, but we'll.
This is the first reading. We'll get the second reading of it. And when we get the second reading, if we want to add it back in there, we'll do, add it back in there.
All right, so Jay's out, Kay becomes the new Jay.
Yes.
So we leave in the pub, the public library?
Yep.
Okay.
Does it mention polling places in the other one? I think that, does the states?
That only happens once, once or twice a year.
No, and they didn't take it. Election Day is, you can sell on Election Day now.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Let's go to the next.
The fear of everyone getting sauced and then voting for the wrong guy.
So the next thing is that I added that under, when we're talking about someone's ability to obtain a license, one of the things that you had talked about was that no license under this ordinance shall be issued to any applicant if any person holding a beneficial interest in the business to be licensed owners owes any delinquent fines or fees to the county. So we talked about taxes.
Yes.
Yes, so taxes were specifically set out, but not other fines and fees and that sort of thing.
We're all good with that, aren't we?
I mean, all right, wait, wait, so we're not including taxes?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
They were already there. Taxes were already there.
You owe any money, you don't get.
Yes. I, I also added a section under enforcement that is in compliance with state law. We just didn't have anything that said this. Any disciplinary action taken by the county against a licensee, a licensee shall be reported to the Georgia Department of Revenue within forty-five days of any officer, department, agency, or instrumentality of the county taking such disciplinary action. We're required to do that by law. Says we have to do it by resolution or ordinance. I'm just adding it to the ordinance.
Okay.
Yes.
And the state also has that reverse requirement. They, once they, if the state pulls a license, then you don't have a license. And so they let us know and we would immediately be enforcing if, if that person was still trying to sell. Um, my, the, the question I had at section six, ten, twenty-five, which is the minimum age for taking alcoholic beverage orders or checkout. Um, we, it says no person may allow or require any person under eighteen years of age to take an order for alcoholic beverages for on-premises consumption or to accept alcoholic beverages for checkout for off-premises consumption. And then the next section is no person under eighteen years of age may take an order for alcoholic beverages for on-premises consumption or accept alcoholic beverages for checkout of off-premises consumption. It's section six, ten, twenty-five.
Keep going back up, yes.
There we go.
Scroll up a little bit.
One more, one more, go up one more. Yeah, so it's right, the, the comment is at the one below it. So it's part B of that section, so you were right, Reagan.
We want part B out, we want to read that one.
And my comment was that we only allow eighteens to stock, we, we, no, sorry. We allow under eighteens to stock alcohol on the shelves and move it around the stores and take it to customers' cars. But we don't let them ring it up at the cash register.
What about a server, a seventeen-year-old working at?
They have to be eighteen to bring alcohol.
To sell.
That's, that's section A. No person may allow or require to take an order or serve.
Yeah, the state law says eighteen for on-premise consumption, sixteen years old for off-premise sales. So what we've done here is we've indicated that we're capping the, or, or putting a bottom limit on the age of eighteen. They've got to be eighteen to sell it at the register for Kroger and to serve it.
And to serve it. At, at the, yeah. Okay.
Why, why the change from the state law?
That, I mean, it's what you have, it's what your, your ordinance is currently.
This is a current.
We can go back to state law and allow Kroger and Eagles to sell at sixteen.
I, I don't like that.
To check out.
I mean, think about it, a sixteen-year-old checkout teenager at Kroger goes, well, you've got this beer here, I have to get a manager. Like, why? I mean.
It, it happens all the time.
But it, but why? Like, like, is that more secure? Is it safer? Is it like, I mean, what's the, what's the point behind the government action there?
The majority of jurisdictions across our state are doing the same thing.
Let me ask this, it's confusing things. Is it the same as cigarettes too? That's what I, okay.
Let's just keep following the way we're going. Okay. What's next?
I mean, I'm not gonna buy it.
Is there anything there? Oh, yeah. Only, only things that we're talking about the possibility of adding. So we did end up deleting a couple of sections. The, so on the very last page, Steve is, Dr. Ledbetter is interested in requiring server permits. That is something that we could add at these, in, in one of these sections at a later date and, and soon, which is why I sent you the City of Decatur information about their, their server permits, their application. It, there, it's a little different with the city because they have them go to the police department to complete the application and all of that. So that, those are just things we have to work through.
If we do something like that, I want to make sure that it's the person's server permit, that it's not through their job. I've seen it like, well, you're fired.
It is, it is the person. That the City of Decatur's is, is actually a pretty good ordinance. And, and it is, it goes with the person that, when that person leaves, that, that.
They can go get.
That server permit is delivered back to, to the city. They have to turn it back into their employer.
But there's no way to enforce that? If they just walk off their job and go and show up?
Well, there's no way to enforce that, but, but it goes, so it's, it's not just according, with the City of Decatur's ordinance, you can word your ordinance however you want to, but it goes with the person and the, the license. So the, the server person and the place where they are working as a server. So once they've left that, the employee of that particular license holder, they would have to get another one if they went somewhere else.
Okay.
This is the issue of, it goes always back to the owner. And when a server's doing something wrong, we want to be able to take care of it with the server.
It just, it lends to servers getting taken advantage of. Hey, you've got your license through me, and if I fire you, you can't go work somewhere else without jumping through all these hoops. So you're out two or three weeks of work, you know? Hey, you're, you're my bartender, so you've got my, you know? And if I fire you because you're not doing what I want, it's three, four weeks that you're out of work.
I think that's like that with any license though, right? I mean, any license you have.
Most licenses are your license. But if I'm, if I work for you and I have to get licensed through you to the city as opposed to getting my license through the city.
So and RAS is a year, doesn't RAS last, last two years or one year?
It's a two-year, yeah, it's a two-year certification.
But you, you said, that's, that's a concern.
I, I, I understand, but it should be pretty easy for, if I've got my license with one place, I, I leave that place. It should be pretty easy because I've already been checked and all that stuff.
Don't you have to have, there's a state affiliation where you actually go in and you, you separate yourself from that person anyway through the state if that person no longer works with you? You hear, you know what I'm talking about, Stephanie?
Not for servers.
Not for, okay.
Yeah, so the, the server permit would be specifically for servers within Spalding County for, for licensed businesses in Spalding County.
Now, the cities, the, in, inside of Fayette County actually have a reciprocating agreement. So if you have a, a server permit in Fayetteville, then you can go and work with that permit over in Peachtree City. So they're doing exactly what James has indicated. They, they don't hold it against the server for, for swapping jobs.
Or part-time work, you know, you're trying to get.
Working two jobs, right.
Hey, I want to move over here and do it over here and I've got a license. Yep, yeah, I work at two restaurants, I don't need two different.
So the server license, according to the state, the license needs to go with the business owner. But what I think I'm hearing is that once you get a license to be a server, you should be able to go and work wherever you want to go with that.
The county would be the ones that would issue the server permits. And it is, it's a permit, it's a, it's a, it's an opportunity for them to go to work and sell alcohol in the county. What that does, it affords us the opportunity to, to take an action against a server instead of against the license. So if you have a, a server that's working for a location that's selling alcohol to the table and they're selling it to friends who are under twenty-one, then the sheriff or code enforcement would have the opportunity to bring an action against that server and not impact the person who is operating the business. If it becomes a habitual issue where there are multiple servers selling alcohol to people under twenty-one, then yes, it would afford you the opportunity to take an action against the license because they are, they're, they're not controlling the servers who are selling alcohol.
Which is what I was going to say is the flip side of that initial argument. You, at, at some point, it is the license owner's responsibility to make sure that these things are not being done. So, and that's, this discussion is exactly why I think that that section needs to remain reserved. And we, we, we concern ourselves with server permits a little bit later. The same with tasting events, which we discussed before and are currently allowing. And there, there's, you know, Georgia code, that a tasting event, actually, that section would be fairly easy to add. I wouldn't want you to approve something on first reading with nothing there, however. So I would want to come back and add that a little bit later. And.
And that's what ten forty-two is, is.
Yes, yes. And then we would need to add the exception for salons and spas, which would be a new section. And then when we do go back and, and look at the licensed alcoholic beverage caterers, then that's going to be an entirely new division of this ordinance because it'll be a whole new thing.
All right, everybody square with all of that?
Thank you, Stephanie. Yes, ma'am.
All right, you have everything you need from us.
I do, yes, sir.
All right.
So we're not, we're not quite at first reading, right? Like, that's, we're not going to like up.
My preference.
Where are you with this? This is, you want to, there's a lot that we're still adding. You want to say that you're good enough with first reading? I'm not real crazy about that.
No, no, I'm not.
So we'll look for first reading at our August, August meeting, first meeting in August.
As soon as you get this ready to go again. All right, do we need a table?
Yes, sir.
Motion to table.
A motion to table? Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
A second.
All right, I have a motion, a second. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five, zero, this action is tabled. Item number five, consider approval of the conflict of interest ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, the, the conflicts of interest ordinance was part of the ethics ordinance when we made those updates. We separated it out at the end because, in, in order for there to be, because there was an agreement on conflicts of interest. And so in order for there to be an approval of the ethics ordinance, we separated the two. The conflicts of interest ordinance here is in compliance with, with state law. It follows the Code of Ethics and Conflicts of Interest policies that are already in Georgia law. And it just, quite honestly, was designed to protect you against complaints of conflicts of interest violations. Most counties have this included within their ethics ordinance. It's regarding, you know, the, the possibility of any financial misdoing, mis, misdeeds. And I, I did want to clarify that it, it only regards covered officials, employees. And a covered official is, is defined in the ethics ordinance as any member of the Board of Commissioners, any person who has been appointed to a position by the Board of Commissioners of Spalding County. So I would be included in that, Dr. Ledbetter would be included in that, Mr. Galloway. The, and also any member of the zoning board of appeals or any other appointed board. But these are boards that you appoint, and you do not appoint to every single board.
Not even the election.
I, you do not appoint to the Board of Elections.
Mr. Chairman, when, when this came up the first time, we had a workshop where we very, we, there was rather heated argument about this language. And so it was decided not to put it in the ethics ordinance and for that not to come forward. At the next meeting, it was in the ethics ordinance. And had I not pulled it up and seen that we were about to pass something that we had specifically directed to not be there, we would have done so. I, I haven't looked at this language. I'd love to have some more time to, to look at it, to make sure that it's not the language that we specifically asked not to be there last time. And yet it was. And so I, I'm going to make a motion at this time to table.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hands. Five, zero, motion is tabled.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. And the only reason I, I even brought it back up is because it was something that we had agreed to bring back up and it had definitely fallen through the cracks.
Yes, we agree. We're going to look at that. Commissioner Dutton, you come back to us and the next time we'll yet deny it or approve it. All right, item number six, consider approval of the execution of deed to John O. Scott, senior for a portion of North Second Street Extension, which is previously abandoned by Spalding County.
So, Mr. Chairman, in twenty, early twenty twenty-three, you abandoned a portion of North Second Street Extension, which had truly been abandoned for many years before and had been maintained by the Scott family for quite some time. And when you abandon right-of-way, it, it actually goes, according to law, centerline to the property owners on each side. Well, the Scott family owns on both sides. And so the property is theirs, but the, the property owners would prefer, and I, I didn't see a problem with you executing a quitclaim deed that just further defined that so that when someone is checking title to their property, it's easier for them to see that they actually do have legal title to it.
Does it, do the parcels need to be consolidated or you think, does that right-of-way?
That has already happened, the right-of-way is gone, so there, that's.
You're going to know.
Everything that they've needed to, to do has been done.
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any more discussion?
How far away is the, this used to be the back entrance into Sun City Peachtree. So how far away is this roadway from that?
I don't have any idea because I haven't looked at it from, from, from that, but there's a very large plaque here.
Here's a smaller one up on the thing.
They, like, they already own it, they just want it clear.
I don't know that it delineates it though.
Okay.
All right, any more discussion?
It does not.
All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Five, zero, quitclaim deed. Item number seven, consider approval of the FY twenty-five GED testing agreement between Southern Crescent Technical College and Spalding County on behalf of the Spalding County Correction Facility for GED testing by SCCI inmates. Warden?
Yes, sir, good evening. This is simply a renewal of the contract that we already have in place with SCTC and Spalding County to do the testing for the inmates for GED.
Do I have a motion to approve?
You want it?
Motion to approve.
Oh, yeah, this is important. All right, I have a motion, do I have a second?
I, I second.
Okay, one of you two?
Yeah, she motioned.
I said motion.
Sorry, I lost it. Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five, zero, thank you. Thank you, Warden.
You got to jump in there if you want to.
See, he's moving pretty fast over here.
Well, I mean, that's.
All right, item number eight, so everybody knows, is gone. Moving to item number nine, consideration from the Board of Elections to use corporate extension. I understand that Ms. Slaughter is going to team in.
Yes, I'm a core.
And that the vice chair of the board is here? Who is the acting chair right now, I think, today?
Usually, it seems like, yes. Commissioners, Chairman, and Dr. Ledbetter, how do you do? I think you all probably read my letter. And you know that we're under a time constraint that we have to notify by the eighth, I believe it was, of August because of the sixty-day requirement before the start of early voting. We have to notify of change of venue. So if you don't approve this tonight, it'll be too late. Is Kim here? Is Kim online?
Yes.
Okay, because if not, I have.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
So, so is he saying that sixty days before the actual election, they have to have a spot where they're going to be doing this?
No, we have to have approval so that we can. No, we have to have approval so that we can publish.
Yeah, they have to, like, publish to the world right there.
Right, we don't have to move in, we just have to have approval so we can publish.
So they've got to, the rule is, they've got to have it, publish it.
If they're moving from one to one location to another.
We have to notify the public of the change of venue.
All right, now, let's, let's talk about it, the mechanics, thank you. Let's talk about the mechanics of it, so everybody understands. The original plan, the long-range plan was, in our, in my mind, was to go ahead and move UGA extension away from where they are now. And the county manager is working that in a couple of different directions to be able to get it, and it seems to be going all okay.
And, but we don't have a target for that yet, like, we don't have a destination for them right now, right?
Correct.
And we've got some ideas, but nothing-
We've got ideas.
Yes, all right. Now, the original, my original thought was, use that space right next door, where we have been, a number of us have been anyway, to do what they want to do, which is allow early voting to be in there. Ask them, even if it's not ready, ask them to leave, the extension people to leave, and we will just use that space. That was going to be a pretty easy fix, as far as I was concerned. Now, we start to get into, oh, we've got to have a door here, we're going to need this marked off, we're going to have to have sensors here, we're going to have to have a whole bunch of stuff that hard for the county manager to say for certain that he can have ready to go. One of the issues, you know, is moving, that we heard, moving the outside. Well, if we're, are we going to punch a hole in the wall right now, between now and-
That's the front-
And agree to that, or not? I think it's no problem for the space itself, but the added security issues to be able to do it is a much bigger issue than between now and October to be able to do it. And we haven't given the county manager enough money to make those short-term fixes. I was really looking at a long-term fix to be able to do it, not trying to get it done by early voting. Once we started walking down the street, all of a sudden, it was, well, let's do it in early voting. Well, I was thinking after early voting would get the construction cost in, would get everything ready to go, and do this. Now they're trying to move, get us to move in time to be able to do it. I don't know the hardcore requirements to be able to do that. Does that mean a new wall? Does that mean new doors? What does that mean? I'm okay with that. I'm okay with telling the county manager, get with the supervisor and work out those details to be able to do it. And if he says it's okay to be able to do it in time for the October voting, then I'm all okay with it. If he says, I can't get it done by then, so we've got what turns out to be two weeks to be able to see what the real requirement is.
I want to hear from Steve. Steve, what are, what are your thoughts and plans on this?
Well, remember, the, the board gave us $25,000 to engage with-
An engineer.
Engineer to, to move forward. So we definitely don't have the funds to make the, even the temporary transition. We are moving expeditiously. In fact, Philip's sitting in the back of the room laughing at the moment, because he is with corporate extension, and we have been jumping through hoops trying to find the location for them, because they need to move in order to open up the full space. We, we are, we are working diligently to get to a position where we can have regular voting, the precinct in that location. I'm just not sure we're going to be able to pull enough strings to get us in the next 90 days available for early voting.
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Slaughter does have her hand raised.
Just a second, Kim. Go ahead, attorney.
No, I was just letting you know that Ms. Slaughter did have her hand raised.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, all right, Kim.
Thank you. So it would have been, it would have been good to have had a conversation pre, I think I'm understanding, Dr. Ledbetter, that the engineer has already been secured, is that correct?
We, we are working to secure the engineer as soon as we find the location for the corporate extension. I need to pull the trigger both for the cooperative extension to get moved first, so that we can understand how long it's going to take to get them into a new location. And at the same time that we engage the engineer for moving the corporate extension, we will engage the engineer for the, the renovation of the facility next door to the Board of Elections.
Okay, well, Director Philip Hensley and I, and I want to just pause here to say, first of all, thank you, Board of Commissioners, Dr. Ledbetter, and thank you to my poll workers that are there this evening, and my staff. And this is all for the voters of Spalding County and the security of one of the most precious rights we have, and that's the right to vote. What Philip and I have, and Philip is just wonderful, I want to say thank you, Philip, and he knows that, we've spoken often. I have a great respect for what UGA extension provides to this community, what they have done in the past, what they continue to do. And it is just as much important to me that they, that their needs are met, just as our needs are met. With that said, I think we could have, if we would have communicated all together and collaborated together, we could have made this work without an engineer up front, just for the temporary, temporary of working it through for the advanced voting period. So, and I would be glad to share what, that, what that information is, temporary walls, just more outlets and creating a doorway. I saw the team of Spalding County, that Lance Griffin, and I know that Lance's plate is full right now, but, that he leads, and they do an awesome job. And I think it was, it, it was very well in range to do what we need to do if we just would have collaborated about it and communicated as well. I do want to share this with you, that in November of 2020, the general election, which was a COVID presidential year, 13,524 voters cast their vote early. In November of 2022, which was a gubernatorial year, 13,462 voters cast their vote early. That's only 62 shy of the presidential year. So my thought and my projection is, and I'm sharing this with you because I really need to draw the picture of the importance, is that I believe also in 2020, 7,958 absentee ballots were cast by mail. I would suspect that was due to COVID. I'm thinking that in 2024, early voting for the November presidential, advanced voting, we will take probably about 5,000 of those votes into advanced voting, which will put us at 18,000. It would not surprise me at all if we did not surpass the 18,000 mark in the upcoming advanced voting period for the November general election. I also want to remind you, the commissioners, that I have shared this information for two years now, if not longer. And we must act, and we must act appropriately. I still believe it is doable if we will put our priorities in order and communicate and collaborate.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Gwen, did you have a comment?
Mm-hmm, you know I do. I'm all about having some order when you're doing stuff, and I hear what Kim, Kim is saying, but this is, this is a four-year problem we, we've had since four years ago. And, I mean, maybe some of these security requirements happened in the last four years, I'm not real sure, I don't keep up on election stuff. But if we're doing what we need to do in order, we don't even have an idea what it costs for us to do whatever it is that we say we're going to do. Secondly, if it's just about having security for the voting machines, why not put the voting machines somewhere and put 24-hour guard on the building? I mean, I'm, I'm just trying to understand, we've got ambulances open, we've got city parks open, there's a big enough space to do elections in. And if, if the problem that I understand Kim is saying is that they would have to always take the voting machine and bring it back, if it was being guarded by security, then it should be secure at that spot for the next day. So, like I said, I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to think out of the box, but it, I think it's very unrealistic for us to even make them think that in two weeks, we will know what we're supposed to be doing. So I think-
I think there are security requirements or a state thing, not, I don't think we can just guard on it, you know what I'm saying?
I, I don't know that. I mean, I, I don't know that, but that is what I-
State and federal, elections are governed by state and federal law.
So, so, so that, I mean, my, that's my point. I don't know if there's a specific requirement, does it have to be a police officer, does it have to be a sheriff deputy, should it be a security detail or security company? But I think that, something like that at this point would certainly be more realistic for us to be able to pay for them to have around-the-clock security and be able to put cameras and everything else at a location where they can make sure that the machines are secure. What were you going to say, Stephanie?
I, I was just going to say that if it, if it was, if it did remain at the Athletic Hall of Fame, we are going to have issues that will cost the county money because of the laws that, regarding wait times, because you have, we're going to have longer-than-allowed wait times pursuant to law, and that's going to require us to take very quick action after early voting, to put processes in place to correct that, because those corrective measures have to be taken within 60 days.
Well, and I also get concerned a little bit about, one of the speakers actually spoke, spoke, citizens, poll workers spoke about any medical conditions that happen out there. I mean, I didn't know that that maybe had taken place, I think-
And it has, and Ms. Slaughter has her hand raised, she can certainly address one of those that, that has taken place, but-
That's, that's concerning.
Yes, there, and I'm sorry, but I can't see you all, so it makes it a little hard sometimes to know when to speak and when not to. But yes, there have been several health issues to take place. What we see happens once the line is, and I believe we reached to two hours, right at two hours in the November 2022 advanced voting period, people with health issues, number one, those, problems with those health issues are, come about, whether it's, say, low, low sugar. We did have one specific incident, I mean, we had several where people had to just sit down for whatever reason it, what may be. And, but one incident, majorly, we had a lady two just about pass out and fully hit the floor in advanced voting. And she was out on the, stretched out on the floor as we waited for the ambulance to arrive and for them to stabilize her and move her out. She was probably there at least 40 to 45 minutes. This blocked at least four to five BMDs from being used. Of course, her health was the most important, but what I'm telling you, the mobility through there, through the Athletic Hall of Fame, awesome, it works fine, I won't say awesome, not awesome, because security-wise and the access that's, that's available to the Athletic Hall of Fame, but you don't see it in a smaller election. You will always see it in a larger election. So yes, there are multiple, multiple of those. And what we do see, Gwen, I do, Commissioner Flowers-Taylor, I want to address what you said about off-site. What happens when it's off-site, we're small staff, and you can't justify hiring a larger staff for a period that happens every four years. So we're a smaller staff, and what happens with this, the size of a county like ours is we're, we're, we're middle, we're middle ground, we're not little anymore, we're not small, small, but we're not large. So you can't, once we start spreading out our staff, because staff would have to go where advanced voting and early voting takes place, so that takes away from, you know, your main office area. I have found that many, many times, because we are close to advanced early voting, we are able to resolve issues much, much quicker. And just of security, even if we were to move away from where we are now, we would have to notify the state of that as well. So that is just not something I want to entertain at all, I understand it. But I do want to reiterate, if we would have talked about this a year and a half to two years ago, we would not be where we are right now. And I still believe it to be a doable task if Philip and I, Mr. Hensley, were able to meet someone there, Dr. Ledbetter and Lance, or whomever it may be, and talk about what the need would be. I believe it's possible. So I just want you to understand, too, wait time, as we saw up to two hours in the November 2022 election, I would not be a bit surprised if we did not see a four-hour wait or more. We're only able to house 14 BMDs, those are the ballot marking devices, that's which, just like the touchscreen, and one scanner, one scanner for votes to be cast into, cast in by the voter. So if we could get to where we could house 20 BMDs at least, and two to three scanners would put us in a much better position.
All right, I can, this, how about looking at this and saying, Dr. Ledbetter to get involved, we can vote on this on TMZ, on the 25th. Give them enough time to be able to go and see. And then it's either we say yes or no, if we say no, we're, we're not going to be able to make it by the one August date to be able for them to move forward. If, if we can, if we say, hey, we see a path to be able to do that, then on the 25th, we'll approve going ahead. I'm hesitant to approve something that I'm not quite sure what all is involved.
I just want the two, all due respect, Chairman Davis, I do want the Board of Commissioners to be prepared to take the responsibility if we cannot work hard to make something happen, okay?
What does that mean? What, what does that mean? We haven't been responsible for anything from the Board of Elections so far, why are we now responsible for it? Sorry. Because I don't understand what, what that means that you just said, because why would we take responsibility for this?
Responsible for the, the information that will come through, negative news media. It is, if you look at OCGA, and this is all due respect, Board of Commissioners, I appreciate everything that you all have done for us. I actually had a presentation for you, but we sort of plowed into this, and here are there, here we are. But OCGA, 21-2-300B does state that the county is to provide adequate space, adequate outlets for the operation of elections. So what did it mean? That was not in any way to be meant in a threatening way, I just meant to come along with us and accept responsibility, help us to help the voters understand that if we were not able to do anything, that we had done all that we could possibly do, and we just could not resolve the issue. That is what I mean.
So, so Kim, thank you for that explanation, but I have a real issue with providing adequate, because adequate doesn't tell me what that means. It was adequate two years ago, it was adequate four years ago, it was adequate six years ago.
It wasn't. Oh, no, it was not adequate.
So, so, no, I'm saying, but you continue, you guys continue to move forward. We're offering you the opportunity to be able to securely house your stuff in one spot, and I get it, you want to be close to there, but if people are working in, at the polling place, they're not in your office. I mean, are you saying that your office staff, the, the ladies who work in the office, the absentee ballot lady, the voters' registration people, they actually go down and assist people to vote in the, in the polls? No, I'm asking her. I, I see y'all shaking your head, but I'm asking her.
Okay, so you have your poll workers, your poll managers in place who operate a polling precinct, advanced voting, just to say what on Election Day, but the difference between advanced voting and Election Day is the volume is so much higher during advanced voting and coming from different precincts. You're servicing voters from all different precincts. So you have multiple questions that are, that arise from voters, whether it's, they thought they were registered to vote, whether they had moved, there are so many different variables that play in that. Also, we balance on the hour. What does that mean? We want to balance at the end of the day. Remember, it's six o'clock or five o'clock, whenever advanced voting will end in October, each day, if there are 100 or 150 voters in line, every single one of those voters will vote that time, and we don't go home until after that. So an hourly balancing has put us in a very good spot, as you see the reports come through to you each day of early voting. And that is another reason for the proximity of the advanced voting location. One day, do I- One day, do I see eventually having to have two locations in Spalding County? I do. I did inquire of a couple other locations, but that availability was not there. And that is where we are, and that is the desire for it to be under one roof. Just remember that counties, we are not in this alone. Before 2020, when all the Dominion equipment was coming in, the area that was once our early voting location now houses the Dominion equipment. I don't understand, I was not here. I guess a last-minute decision or a quick decision had to be made, and they said, where are we going to go? And they went to the Athletic Hall of Fame, because it was nearby. I'm sure that was one of the reasons. And so was it adequate for 2020? No, it was not adequate for 2020. I waited in line myself for three and a half, I think about three and a half hours there.
Well, I have to honestly say, Kim, I hear you. And I want the poll workers to know, I do hear you on this. I think we have an obligation and a duty, I feel. I know some disagree here.
No, I agree.
To make this, to make this right, to do what we need to do so that they're not put in a situation that they don't need to, in order to help secure these elections that we know we have to, we have to bye-bye. So whatever it is we need to do, we're having Dr. Ledbetter go check this out. It's the right thing. It's more of the right thing to do. I mean, I just, I don't even see how it's not right at this point, so.
For me, like...
I don't, I'm trying to understand, excuse me, James. What it is that you're saying that it is right, as if we have not done something that we were supposed to do.
Well, I think what I'm saying here is that if it has been brought to our attention that they need more spacing and these things that they need to have in order to make the elections flow properly and accurately, whatever they need to do, then we, as a board, need to do what we need to do to help them get to that point, to help, to make sure that that's done. And, you know, we're, like we say, we're voters, we're citizens, you know? And I think, you know, whether or not jurisdictionally, should I say we have an obligation to do this? I think whatever control we have to make it right, I think we should. If that's the funding mechanism, then we should, I think, at the end of the day.
But that's not the point, really, because the point is that they need it expedited.
Yeah.
And so that means, that gives us no time for planning. That means we're making a knee-jerk reaction.
But I think what I'm hearing here is that we were told this a couple of years ago. So, I mean, if that's the case, and, you know, I'm not putting onus on anybody here, but, I mean, I think that we were at the midnight, we need, we need to get it done. If whatever reason it wasn't done, or, and I know we've, I know they've been here talking to us, because we've heard them talking, you know, for the last several, several meetings and presentations they've done. So, I mean, this is just me, I'm one person, but I'm going to stand by it. I think we need to do whatever we need to do to help expedite this, so this is done. That's where I stand.
James?
My only concern was the extension. And if, you know, I don't want to displace somebody who then, you know, adds so much value to the community, and they really do. And I, you know, it's like, well, where are we going with them? Do we have a, do we have a plan? We're working on a plan. We're not quite there yet, but, but that's already started thinking. And most importantly, our extension's okay with it. He's here tonight. Thank you for being here. And he's saying, yeah, I'm okay with that. I know they're going to move me somewhere. So if he's okay with that, and this is what the Elections Board wants, I'm, you know, we know they need more space. I think we should, the old grocery store that's there, that's now just like storage, that's, that's my eventual plan. We just make that a giant early voting area.
And these medical issues I'm hearing, I didn't, I didn't know if any of that. I don't think, this is the first time I've ever heard anything like this.
Anytime there's a crowd, you got to take that kind of stuff.
So, yeah, I'm a medical personnel. You have 13,000 people standing up to vote, and one of them passed out. That was going to happen wherever they were. So, so I'm not saying that people shouldn't be encouraged, but I stood in line a long time to vote here as well. So, but you can't get people to drink water while they're standing in line. You can't offer them a chair. These are not things that we came up with. This is what the state came up with. And so, so my, my whole contention, because, Kim, I'm just going to be frank about it. When I came and talked to you about this, I did what you asked me to do. Now, I did, I was not aware of that. I shared that with you at that time. Now, I don't know that somebody, anybody else up here was aware of it, but I'm pretty sure the reason that we're even talking about this is because I came and pushed about it. So what I'm saying to you now...
No, no. That's not it at all, Commissioner Flowers-Taylor, no.
So, so, so before I came and talked to you, you had already had a plan and a potential for someone to have some money to help you renovate the building?
I had submitted a capital outlay request to you, the board, at the time of budget submission. If you all remember, I spoke about that.
I remember that. But you had no idea how much it really was going to cost.
Right, and no one's really come back to me formally and said, hey, this is where we are, and it's not going to happen. And so I found out about this in open conversation at a staff meeting. And so if I'm saying and standing here saying that if the option is there, let's take advantage of it. There may be something we could temporarily do for the upcoming advanced voting until we know that the UGA extension is in the best place that it needs to possibly be. I think it warrants a conversation anyway.
Oh, I'm never not talking to you about it, Kim. I'm just simply saying, what I felt like, the letter that came from your vice chair, and what I heard from you at the end of your commentary, was this is our fault that we didn't make this deadline for you. And now that we do have a plan, which was to get an engineer to tell us what it's going to cost to move the building, not appropriate any monies for that until we know exactly how much that is going to cost us. And, but I feel like even with that, and we've shared with you that that's where we were, that you're still telling us that we have to do something within two weeks. That, that's my point. We are planning on doing what you ask, but, but now it's, we need to do it in two weeks. And so that's what I have a little bit of...
Commissioner Flowers-Taylor, just to be very frank and transparent, it's been quite frustrating when you've been asking in regards to the advanced voting area for two, two years, and we're just now hitting on it. I'll leave it there to the board. We're going to run an elections that is to the very best of our ability and what my team has always done before. So you, the Board of Commissioners, just need to make the decision of what you deem best for, to assist us in providing what we need to provide for the community of Spalding County, and we appreciate what you do.
So what is the ask from y'all tonight?
Is to move forward if the UGA Extension Office is a possibility to move forward with the implementation of to do what needs to be done temporarily to accommodate advanced voting for the period of October the 15th through, I believe it's November the, but it's the period, it's 16 days instead of 17, this 17 days this time due to Columbus Day. So for the period of advanced voting for the November general election of 2024.
So are you saying that you will be okay if we can find you a location that is not in the UGA office for the October election?
At this, this point in time, it would, that would be, I would be willing to listen to what was offered. It would depend, and it would be something I would need to think more about, because it does raise a lot of concerns of not being able to address situations very quickly in a timely manner, both for the voters, poll workers, and all who are involved.
That's all I got.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
To approve what?
Their request.
Which is to?
Use the UGA extension.
For the use of the...
What that also includes, I believe, is $50,000 more to Steve, plus the 25 he's already got.
What's the $50,000 for?
For their necessary renovations. They got to poke a hole in the wall and run...
And run electricity.
So, 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 so we're going to do $75,000 worth of work that's going to be temporary. And then we're going to come back and spend whatever else.
Okay.
Yeah.
I didn't know it was $50,000. I'm sorry, what? I didn't know the amount there.
We don't, we don't really know the amount.
But where did $50,000 come from?
That's a ballpark for how much it's going to cost to add additional electricity into the building.
But, but that's not everything. You have to have secure doors, and you got to have all this. My point, Mr. Chairman, is that I feel like we're being forced to make a decision that we are not ready for.
My answer to it would be, let's let Steve sit down and talk through it and come back to us on the P and Z timeframe of the 25th.
But you hit the gavel so we can hear what you're saying.
I'm sorry.
No, because there was a talking going on.
My answer is, listen, we've got a couple more weeks to be able to work this out before they have to know. Steve does not know exactly how much more money he needs and what Lance is going to have to give up, stop doing, to be able to do it. So let's, let's come back on the 25th. Let Steve brief us on, this is, it's going to cost me 75, it's going to cost me 35. Lance will be able to do it. He'll stop doing X to be able to get this done so that we understand it, and then we can vote on it. Then they'll have the time to be able, if we say yes, to put out a notice to say, we're moving here. Then we've got, really and truly, from end of July till October to be able to get it ready to go. There's some time inside there to do it. So I'm voting, mine is...
He's got his...
So the motion again was his motion to approve...
Tonight.
No, I'm trying to figure out what the motion is, because my understanding is that Steve had already determined that he was going to move them to the county extension office as soon as he could find a place for them to be able to get moved into. So my question is, what are we voting on?
That plan, we're approving that plan.
The real question, are we, if we vote on that and say yes to that, that says for them to go ahead and start processing the paperwork, they've got to say that we're going to, in fact, do it in October. The early voting will be in the Extension Office in October. I don't know, I'm not sure enough to be able to say yes to that.
A motion to table would supersede mine. And if it passes, would render mine moot, if y'all want to make a motion to table.
I'll make a motion to table just because we don't have enough information. I want us to be able to do it, but we need to do it in order. So, but in the meantime...
All right, we've got a motion, and we've got a second.
Then we vote.
And Steve will get on the stick.
Can you do this by the 25th?
I will leave heaven and earth to do this by the 25th.
All right. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand.
This is to table.
Table, yes. We're going to vote on this on the 25th, for sure. No matter what happens, we'll have the information. We're going to thumbs up or thumbs down, no matter how it goes.
All right, you have...
And I'm against.
Yeah, he's against.
All right, so...
It was 4 to 1.
What was your vote?
Mine?
Yeah.
He voted to table.
I voted to table. Put it where everybody else did.
You had table, 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 and...
He's going to win again.
Okay, I understand. All right, so that motion is, that one's done. Jim, you understand all the stuff that we're talking about?
Yes, can I say one thing?
Yes.
Commissioners, I want you to understand one thing, and that is any money you spend on electrical outlets for the, this ballot equipment is not wasted and is not temporary. We're going to move into that space, and we're going to put them where they need to be permanently. So this isn't temporary. This is permanent electrical work.
See?
Okay. Thank you, Jim. All right.
Chairman Davis?
Yes, ma'am.
I wanted to tell the board thank you on behalf, and I know Vice Chair James Newlin is there this evening, but if at all, it sounded as if the Board of Commissioners was being pressured to make a decision or expected to make a commitment. The Board of Commissioners, the Board of Elections and Voter Registrations considers the Board of Commissioners, which you are, just a team player in assisting us to do our job. So if anything, I hope the urgency was revealed and not being pushed. It was only the urgency that I wanted to make the point of, to you, the Commissioners, in what we are looking at. So thank you for what you do, and thank you for what you'll do going forward.
Thank you for coming, teaming in with us.
Thank you.
All right. Item number 10, lift from the table and consider increase to daily per diem rate for the Board of Equalization.
Motion to lift, Mr. Chairman.
Second. I'm sorry, what?
Motion to lift.
Second. Oh, all right, I have a motion to lift in a second. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All right, we have lifted that, lifted that.
Thank y'all for coming.
Thank you all for coming and voicing your opinion. Dr. Ledbetter?
No, it's Thursday.
All right. Please, please just step up to the mic, Debbie, thank you.
Thank you. I was, I was just here in support of my chairman, Mr. Castelal. He...
Pardon me, could you close the front door, please, so we can hear? Thank you. Sorry, go ahead, Mr. ...
Good evening. Thank y'all for hearing me out. I wasn't, I wasn't signed up to speak tonight. I was just here in support of Castelal. He's the chairman of the board. I was getting included because I am the administrator over the Board of Equalization, and a lot of the emails, I wasn't getting any response from any direction. I tried to provide some, do some research myself Thursday, once I was finished with court. And I believe at the last meeting, when it was tabled, Ms. Flowers asked for some numbers, similar population size as Spalding County. And I have to be honest, I just Googled it. And so I started, Castelal, the chairman, was having difficulty getting answers, I believe, maybe from some counties or from clerks. I'm not sure who he contacted. So I called the clerks myself, and Gordon County, just by doing an approximately population size, I said approximately, because I, you know, population can vary. There were, they only had 50 appeals filed in 2023. Their board members are paid $100 per day. And two, I do believe, you know, that the millage rate for these counties probably weighs in as far as decisions on how many appeals we're receiving in Spalding County. Their millage rate's set at 28.65. Catoosa County, population 68,984 approximately. Their millage rate also set at 28.88. They only had 142 appeals filed to their appeal administrator in 2023. Their board members are also paid at $100 per day. Troup County, which I just know this in the back of my mind just from working with Superior Court with felony trials, when we've had to change venue because of maybe too many people in the area know about the case or what's going on with the case from news media outlets. One of our bigger cases, where City of Griffin Officer Jordan was killed working a part-time job, it was moved to Troup County by the, by the circuit because their population was so similar to ours. But that has been, you know, a few years ago. And their population, approximately 71,000. They only had 500 appeals filed in 2023. Also, their millage rate is set even lower than the other counties at 27.7. Spalding County, approximately population 70,000. Steve can correct me on that if I'm wrong.
69,986.
I'm sorry?
69,986.
Okay, so my Google search wasn't too far off. Our millage rate is set at 10% higher than the rest of the state, at 38.584 for people, for citizens, Spalding County citizens, property taxes. And as, I mean, I'm sure you all, as the commissioners are aware, you, you hear things on the street as I do. And I know that it's not, you know, that a lot of it comes from, you know, our tax money comes from residential, I'm aware of that myself. But unfortunately, in 2023, we had 1,665 appeals. So that's a task that I was inherited and elected for to do that was set at, one time years ago, it was set that the Tax Assessor's Office handled all that. The legislators changed that. And so in addition, with dealing with the courts, the Superior Courts, state courts, and other various duties, which I believe y'all are aware of what the clerk Superior Court's office does, notaries, real estate filings. This is something that, instead of saying in the law that the legislative hand down that the county shall pay, it's set, or it's one of those, they shall pay or may pay, is, you know, the difference in the wording. A lot of counties... A lot of counties do supplement their clerk, the surrounding counties, I do not receive a supplement for handling any of this. I do have a part-time employee. So, and our board members, which I do not have a full board at this time, I had one recently retire. I will be, I can't just appoint someone on my own, I have to present them to the grand jury, and I intend to do that the next time grand jury meets. I have one application now that is qualified, and hopefully I'll have another one by the end of the week. So right now, we do not even have a full board, at their pay is $60 a day, and Castelaw, our chairman, is, has been pushing very hard, you know, to receive a pay increase. When they serve, they serve usually, if the numbers, when they first start coming in and they're really high, they serve about three days a week, nine to four, usually, there's the scheduling hours, when the commercial properties are involved, because the, the values are so expensive. And once there's an appeal filed, it sits at the 85% as far as the collection rate. And then, the residential, once we start to get to those, they usually serve about, from about 10:00 in the morning, so they are there until 4:00 in the afternoon. And if you consider they're only getting $60 a day, it has been a difficult task to try to keep a full board. And I do think, I don't know, Dr. Ledbetter could answer that question more, what some of the other board members are paid. I don't try to, I haven't checked into that, honestly. But I, maybe they're hearing the other board members are being paid at a higher rate, and I think that may be where some of their frustration with the economy and that sort of thing, where, you know, where their frustration is coming in with their pay, their daily pay.
All right, thank you.
So, question, so, so based on them meeting three times a week, and it's 52 weeks in a year, that's 156 times, 56 days that they're meeting. So, is it three people, is it four people, 'cause just for one person...
It's three people per day, we have three members, and then we have three alternates. The alternates are used if one of the members cannot serve due to, um, due to medical, or due to sickness, or due to vacation. Because they have, because the numbers have been so high, they have had to be scheduled just about every week, they have been scheduled just about every week.
So that's 46,800, if everybody else is doing the same math?
Mm-hmm.
They're working 52 weeks a year, they're not working 52 weeks a year.
How much is your estimate on what this would cost to do what the chairman wants?
Um, so, after we sat down and took a look at how many times they were meeting, and how many people would be required, less than 20.
All right, so the answer is...
Oh, okay, 'cause they're, they're not meeting all 52 weeks, they're only meeting for like five or six weeks.
They're not meeting all 52 weeks a year.
So, this would be up to $10,000 for us to put, to move it over, to make this happen, and increase to what they want.
Is the Board of Equalization its own line item, or is it under the Clerk's office? Is it, is it the Board of Equalization line item, or is it the Clerk's office line item that we're moving 10 grand into? Like, is that, are those different?
That money, where does it come, comes out of yours?
I, I do have a separate line item included in my budget for the Board of Equalization.
And what is that line item for their pay? Just what is equal to, I mean, what, what's that total number that you're already getting for reimbursement to them?
I don't think it's anything.
I just know what, I mean, I would have to print my total budget, I believe it's 15,000, but out of that, the, the board members are paid, their training is paid, they're, when, when I have a new board member come on, they're paid $200 for the, they have to, by law, they have to complete a 40-hour training before they're allowed to serve on the board. They're paid at, right now, $200 for the 40-hour training. And then there's, the legislative deleted, abolished the 20 hours, so now they have, after they complete their 40 hours, each year, they have to complete an eight, an eight-hour class, in which they're paid just the standard rate of, set of $100.
So I appreciate the list that you sent us, and just was really astonished at the number of appeals that, that we have. And, and I saw the information that you gave us about the millage rate, and I just really kinda have to wonder to myself, what does a mil equal to in Gordon County? You know, is that $2 million, is it 1.1, is it 900,000? So, that's, for me, that's not a good measurement, but 1,600 cases requires more people than what you guys are doing. So, I, I hear what you're saying, but I'm also hoping that if they're able to get this, uh...
The law only allows for additional people and alternates based on parcel numbers and population.
Okay, so it doesn't matter that we have all of these appeals?
It doesn't matter how many appeals you have.
But I'm just saying, in terms of being able to work through them without it taking two years, that maybe there may be more volunteers who will be willing to serve, because this is a huge number.
You still only have six, you can still only have six people, three people and three alternates.
Okay.
So, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, okay, I just wanna make sure that we're giving them appropriate amount of money. I mean, my thought process would be, you say 10, it probably needs to be 15, because clearly, if they have enough people, right now, Mr. Castelaw came in the last time, it's like they had to cancel the last two times, 'cause somebody couldn't be there. So we need that business to be happening all, all, all year long, so...
All right, 15,000?
I thought it was 10.
10,000.
I mean, Gwen said she wants to make it a little bit more, I'm, I'm okay with 15, now, if you wanna make it 10, I'm okay with that.
I, I think we, we would, I'd rather err on the side of them having to get paid, because they're doing more cases than us not to have enough money, and they gotta come back and say, well, we're, we're working on behind off, there's no more money left for you to do this.
I think he mainly wants the daily rate established.
That's correct.
He wants the da- the daily rate to go up.
Right, yes.
I think most of the surrounding, you know, counties around our population, they receive at least 75 to 100 dollars per day, whereas Spalding County, the board members are only paid 60 dollars per day.
Did y'all, we got a motion?
He asked for 100.
Yeah, he's asking for 100 dollars for their daily per diem, and if you will afford us the opportunity to move 10 grand in, if we need to move more in toward the end of the year, we will bring that back in budget amendment.
Okay. Motion to amend the per diem to 100 dollars per day per person, and to reallocate 10,000 dollars into their budget from, where's it coming from?
It would come from fund balance.
From fund balance.
10,000 dollars is okay.
On second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, any more discussion?
If they need more later, we can come back.
Yes, they come back, and if they have less, we'll take it back.
Yeah, sure.
All right.
They'll never have less.
All right, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand, 5-0. Thank you for sitting through all this. All right.
Do we wanna do, yeah.
Do you have a long?
Mr. Chair, I will make mine extremely short. T-Splas is going well, and we have almost completed our number of roads for this year. We're still waiting for the striping and the side, uh...
Way to go, way to go.
The side work, very proud of the guys. I do wanna give a huge kudo and shout-out to Mr. Kevin King for completing the APWA certification program. He did a wonderful job. I had the privilege of going down and being a part of the, the celebration Thursday evening for that, and it was my privilege to represent the county for that. Thank you very much for that opportunity.
Well, thank you. All right.
Quick, real quick, I got a chance to do the career day, we saw it on Facebook with the kids at Fairmont, it was awesome week. But what I learned there is, they do a really good job of trying to take them outside of Spalding County, so they can learn things, you know? Some of the kids have never been to Stone Mountain and places like that, but transportation is an issue for them. And I know they're, they're not gonna ride Big Blue, I get that. But maybe when you're considering a T-Splas, or maybe some type of, with a partnership with the Board of Education, that maybe we could utilize, maybe a bus of theirs, so they can actually take the kids, you know, and, and go to some of these events that they could benefit from, it's, those are life-changing moments, so. I'd like for the Board to kinda consider that in the near future. I didn't get a chance to hear the gentleman talk about the soccer fields. He didn't finish his three minutes, but I wondered if that's something he'll may take back to Leisure Services, going, maybe to come talk about the fields.
We already talked about it at Leisure Services.
Okay.
I'll, I'll...
Okay, I'm done on that. And last but not least, I can't thank the Fire Department enough for the awesome Fourth of July banner, that was very special, something near and dear, I'll never forget it.
Yes.
All my departments I love, you know, just, just, just be mindful of that, but this one was a little special, because I do ride with them, and I've ridden with them in these parades for the last 12 years. I've got one more left, so, thank you again, guys.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Dunn?
Let me tell you, the hoops that you have to jump through to get one of those school buses.
If you got a mic, here you are.
Even for, yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
To jump through to get school buses.
They, they, like, even...
Who drives them, by the way, the kids? That's another question.
School bus drivers? Anyway, it's, sometimes it's pulling teeth, it shouldn't be, but it is. The Fourth of July parade was, was great, my kids always love it, um, we're...
Hot.
It was hot.
Hot?
But you could, you could see more and more people are showing up, as everyone's getting used to the route, and we're getting more and more civic participation from our civic groups, so... I, I know we all got an email, and I, I know he's, he's spoken to Ryan about the sewage in the Ison Branch. Like, that's, that's a big issue. That, that's a big issue, we need to...
So, you know, I talked to Doug specifically about that issue.
Yeah.
He's well aware of it, he says we're working it, he said, I started the conversation, he said, look, let me just skip to the end, I know what that is, we're working hard on it.
Okay, and it's because it's been two years, and like, we, we, you shouldn't smell raw sewage on South Sixth Street. I mean, it's just...
Okay.
Okay. Where, where are we, read the $250,000 that we've been putting in to reimburse for deductibles?
Medical, this is a medical issue?
Yeah, if you will come by and schedule some time with Miles, he's got all of the answers for you.
Great, okay, so that's been hunted down, excellent. What else? I, I've been in discussions with the, the folks running the pools, United Pools, I think they're doing a fantastic job. I think we're having a lot of success over there, it's, we're, you know, we, we've really got a great facility. I think even they agree that the monthly and yearly prices are just absurd, and we need to bring them down to try to encourage people to get more, you know, monthly and, and year passes. I mean, right now, a year pass for an individual is more than 10 times the cost to go to Six Flags for the year, like, it, it doesn't make any sense. Obviously, that, you can't compete with Six Flags, but at the same time, like, I mean, it's like $650 for a year pass right now, like, that, that, that doesn't make any sense. So, I've asked him to keep collecting their numbers and keep looking at what we, what we've got, and come back and sort of report. I don't think anyone has bought a month or a year pass yet, and there's no reason to. And we want more people to buy those.
Yes.
Even if they're gonna use them more, hey, great, you know, but I have a, I have a sneaking suspicion that much like a, a year subscription to a gym, a lot of people that buy those are gonna use them a lot less than they think they are, you know what I'm saying, and so, it actually ends up in our favor, even though it's cheaper per visit, you know what I mean, like, so... But they're just priced so out of range right now. But I've asked him to come back and report to us, so that'll be a few months, but, anyway, otherwise, I think everything's going great.
Okay, Commissioner Flowers Taylor?
I'm talking about the soccer fields and the Soccer Association coming to Leisure Services meeting this week. They've gotten with the UGA turf people about re-sodding the soccer fields, and their estimate is that it would be about $20,000. The only problem is, is that if you re-sod the field, you can't play on it. And, so then, still, where are you gonna play? I, I think that we would do better to try to use our resources to find alternate places for them to practice, so that the field can get a rest. There's no way that Greg or the guys working for Leisure Services can have time to even go out and inspect it, because someone's playing on it eight months out of the year. So, yeah, Peter Phelps was at the meeting, and he was like, so are y'all raising money like we do? And then they're kinda forced to help you out, because you raised the money? And they were like, no. So, I, I don't see an answer for that. You either shut the whole thing down and refix the fields, 'cause you can't fix a patch, or we give them someplace else to practice and let some of the fields rest, and then once we rejuvenate, we, hopefully, we can move to the next, but, yeah, so that was basically what, what the end game was. We find if you get turf from UGA, but if you start running and playing on it before it even gets a chance to root, it's, you, you haven't done anything, so. I'm not sure what the answer to that is, and they were gonna come back to Leisure Services with some kind of plan for how they could make that happen. So, hopefully, but I, I mean, I, I do agree, we talked about different places, different churches in the community, who have allowed us to use some of their stuff before. I think what they really just need is if, even if they had an alternate place to play, they feel like they still need goals, you know, which we probably could do that. But I think the big push is, they need to stay off the field. You can't expect it to, to use it eight months out of the year through drought and everything else, and then, you can't fix it. What's wrong with that, two of the fields out there, you, you can't fix it by sticking something in, you gotta do the whole thing over.
And how many years he said it was?
25.
20 something years.
25.
25, I guess, a long time.
For the soccer, for the soccer field, yeah. Let me see, I was gonna ask you guys something, Griffin used soccer. I'm glad that we got the situation straightened out with Leisure Services, because I could not understand why we would think that children who were in private school or homeschool couldn't swim. That, to me, that's, you know, that's, that's a no-brainer.
The letter of the motion was, kids who attend Griffin Spalding schools.
Okay, but, but that's, but that's what I'm saying, obviously, we, we were very narrow-minded with that, because lots of people homeschool, and lots of people go to private schools. So, I'm glad that, that that has been rectified. I am still sitting here thinking, while we're discussing what the fees are for public works, and what the fees are for swimming, let's talk about what the fees are for dumping your trash. I, I, I'm just saying. It's not an OCGA mandate, it is a service that we provide, and if we think it's important enough to charge people to recreate, then we ought to be able to charge people to dump their trash. So, I'm gonna keep saying that every time I come to this meeting.
Excuse me, Griffin Daily News, you put that in the list? I'm kidding.
No one is calling to close the election center, uh, the election centers, no one is going to close the election centers. We're not closing.
Okay, I, I think we know everybody's position.
Okay.
Yeah.
But that's, that's, that's it for me.
Say it as often as you wanna say it, yes, all right, anything else, ma'am?
There is about a letter from a, a vicar, and a conversation with her that is doing her doctoral dissertation, and part of her program is teaching communities how to talk about addiction and the problems associated with it, and, and giving people a language. So, I think an invitation will be coming to all of us, because they want to start working with community leaders to come up with a strategy for how to educate the community on how to better talk about mental health. That's all I got.
I'm 100% for that, okay. Vice Chair?
I got just two little quick things, and I'll put this in email form for you tomorrow. But the infamous 111 King Richard is back. I'm getting a lot of complaints, and Sheriff probably talked to a couple of people about it. They're having parties nightly, every night, again.
Is it still an Airbnb?
Just Airbnb guy.
We didn't take their permit?
Well, supposedly, he was renting it out to somebody else, you know, like a permanent rent, but I don't think it...
And now that has Airbnb.
So, I just wanna let the Nottingham State people know that we're, we're on it, we're gonna watch it. And the second one, I sent an email to code enforcement, it's been three or four weeks ago, about the corner of Lakeside and 92, behind Walmart. We need to try to figure out a way, get in contact with the, the owner of the property, and let him know what's going on, 'cause he lives in Florida. We got, it's a homeless camp, and the neighborhood, they're starting to complain, it's just trashy, I mean, it's lost that pile up in there. And they're starting to complain about it, and there's nobody being held accountable, and he might even know that it's there. But if he does, we need to start sending him a, a little fine. Take care of it, that's all I got.
Okay. There's an opportunity to get chicken benefit out of the Sheriff's Office for taking care of one of our majors that's in a bad way. I would suggest to everybody that if you can afford to do that, please do it. You'll pick it up on the 26th, put the money, you take the money, take it out to the Sheriff's Office, and put it in there...
and, uh, put it in there. It's $15 to do that. Uh, all right. Executive, uh, item number nine, executive session. Uh, one to discuss or deliberate the appointment, employment, compensation, hiring, disciplinary action, or dismissal, or periodic evaluation, or rating of a county officer or employee as provided by OCGA 50-14-36. Item number two, for the executive session, consultation with the county attorney or other legal counsel to discuss pending or potential litigation, settlement, claims, administrative proceedings, or other judicial actions brought or to be brought by or against the county, or any officer or employee, or in which the county or any officer or employee may be directly involved as provided by OCGA 50-14-21. I have a motion. Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, discussion, uh, of future acquisition of real estate as provided by OCGA 50-14-3. Do I have a motion?
So moved for the preceding reasons.
Thank you.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those, uh, please raise your hand. We're in executive session. We will be back out at the end of the executive session. Are we on?
Yes, sir.
Do I have a motion to come out of executive session?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to come out of executive session.
Second. Okay. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Do I have any other action?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve an EEOC mediation settlement agreement and settlement agreement and release between Natasha Burton and Spalding County in amount of $25,000, and to authorize the chairman to execute required agreements to settle this matter.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor, please raise your hand as you're leaving.
Bye.
Bye.
Happy birthday, Quinn.
Yeah.
We both have birthdays on the same day.